Okay, good morning and welcome to the March 28th Board of Supervisors for Lake County. I'm going to call this meeting to order. And moment of silence?
Yes, I do have a moment of silence. I'd like to give a moment of silence for Bradford Knight, former chairman of the Middletown Rancheria and also Army Veteran. We lost him last week. He was 75 years old. He's, leaves behind Ivan Knight, Lydia Knight, Brian Knight, Jeff Knight siblings and the tribe from Middletown Rancheria is going to miss him, so that's it.
Also a remembrance for Scott Allen Grove, who is co-owner of Pack and Mail here in Lakeport. Passed February 25th at age 58, far too young. Survived by his wife Rena, four children, two grandchildren, and a blended family. So many of us are coming from blended families. Service will be this Sunday at 2:00 PM at Chapel of the Lakes, followed by a reception at Lakeport Yacht Club. Scotty was a very unique character, a pressman, and as a former newspaper man myself, I always loved going back to the press and hanging with those guys. Being a pressman is very unusual and a print is a challenging business on a good day. Scotty was a very unique character and he will be missed.
Supervisor Crandall, do you want to leave us in the pledge?
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any extra items?
I do not.
Okay. Then we will move on to item five, approval of the consent agenda. If you have any items anyone wishes to pull? Supervisor Spatier?
Yes, I'm sorry that I don't have all of these here. I'd like to pull item 5.3, item 5.9, and item 5.11. Please.
Anyone from the public?
I think that's what I said.
5.3, 5.9, 5.11.
Yeah. Thank you.
Is it public now? For items that being pulled from the consent agenda. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone in the public. Bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, move to approve items 5.1, 5.2, 5.4 through 5.8, and 5.10 and 5.12 from the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. And we'll have two minutes. We'll do our public input.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I think 5.11 should be a very easy fix.
5.11, waive the competitive bidding per 38.23 and approve amendment to agreement between the County of Lake and Tyler Technologies to provide case management software and associated services for the period of April 1st, 2023 to March 31st, 2024 for an amount not to exceed $46,880 for the first year, $57,474 for the second year, and $72,498 for the third year, and authorize the chair to sign.
And so I pulled this item and spoke with our Chief Probation Officer about this. The end date right now is March 31st, 2023, but as you detailed, this is a three-year contract and just looking to, I believe, March 31st, 2025?
27, right? 26.
26.
26, yeah.
Oh, sorry, from April 1st, 2023 to, yes, March 31st, 2026. And that was the only correction that I'm looking to make.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's all.
Okay. Anything from the board? Anything from the public? Okay, I will bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to waive the competitive bidding per 38.23 and approve amendment to agreement between the County of Lake and Tyler Technologies to provide case management software and associated services for the period of April 1st, 2023 to March 31st, 2026 for an amount not to exceed $46,880 for the first year, $57,474 for the second year, and $72,498 for the third year, and authorize the chair to sign. And just real quick, just want to make sure, I believe it was just a motion that needed to be changed, everything on the contract is correct, so just wanted to make sure we didn't need to amend anything else. That's my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, and now it is 9:06. We'll move on to public input. Item 6.1, we have two forms that were filled out. Yvonne Cox is the first. Come on up, you have three minutes, just state your name for the record, please.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Yvonne Cox, I'm the Director of the Emergency Warming Shelter. I want to just come in and tell you what a big success this was. Sure, there were bumps in the road, we learned lots of things, but the thing is, to go backwards on this and to shut it down for a couple months, I believe would be counterproductive. We didn't have just drug addicts here, we had a lot of senior citizens, a lot of young people, saved lives. It took people off the streets, in a given day, 36 people at least. If we were to take and have to train all of these people all over, I have 12 employees, it took time to find the right fit for these jobs, people that had empathy, that were respectful and kind, being kind-hearted. I don't care how many degrees you have, if you don't have a heart for this kind of work, it just doesn't work. I've seen it. People come in thinking because they had masters and bachelors that they'd be the right fit, when in fact, they did the wrong things. So I'm just here to say, I hope that you all find it in your heart to figure out a way to keep this going. It's needed all year round, not just when it's cold, but all the time. We have people coming in with CPAC machines, people that have lost their homes because of no choice of their own, but to be, you know, thrown on the street, red-tagged, or for whatever reason. We need to do the humane thing. I see so much money being wasted in the county and other places that could be effective helping people, to give them strategies. You know, we had put into place social services, NA meetings, there's so many different services that we have, we have the Catholic Church coming in, that helps people navigate and hopefully get back on their feet and be productive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mindy Vaughn?
Hello, my name is Mindy Vaughn. I've lived in Clear Lake for 40 years. In December, I became homeless. My property was red-tagged. The warming shelter had just opened, temporary grant in January arrived 1st of February. This shelter has made me feel safe, given me all the facets to obtain my own place. I'm very grateful, thank you.
Thank you. We have anyone else? Can come up?
Hi, my name is John Oxenford, and I have actually been, I guess benefited personally from the Warming Center, and I just can't say how much we really need this around here. Because there's no other shelter in Lake County except for the one over in Clear Lake, and it's hard to get there, it's hard to get into there, and they're not low barrier like we are, so people who do indulge don't have a place to stay. And with the weather that we've been having, and the summer coming up, it's dangerous to be in the hot too much, it's dangerous to be in the cold too much. And with this place, with the Warming Center, it will help them get back on their feet, get services they need, whether they need social security, stuff like that, we can help them apply for it and stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christina Carlisle. I come from another state. Where I come from is one of the largest homeless populations, and when I came here, I had nowhere to go, and if it wasn't for the shelter, I don't know where I'd be right now. I panicked when I found out the shelter might close. So first thing I want to do is I want to leave because where am I supposed to go? What am I supposed to do? Even though it's low barrier, you know, we're people too, and we need to be warm and fed and just like everybody else, and I think that it should stay open forever, honestly, because some of us, like, we struggle with mental illnesses and stuff like that, and we don't have, it gives us foundation, it gives us this place where we know we're going to put our heads, where we know we're going to eat our food. And without knowing that, we don't know what's going to happen the next minute, and so I think it's important that it does stay open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Courtney Sanchez, I'm an enrolled member of Giddy Village Rancheria over in Ukiah. I ended up coming over to the side and becoming homeless, I'm doing really no fault of my own, but in the last month or so, I've been staying out under Highway 20 in different places by myself. During this time, actually, I had been raped, robbed, beaten, and the only place that I found that had a, on the spot availability, was the Warming Center. Now, I've been there for about a week now, that's the only place that I could find where I could actually sleep and rest and get myself together to get back on track. Now, I'm not like, you know, running around doing whatever, it's able to keep me focused to get where I need to get, to get the paperwork I need, and get back to a place where I can get myself on my feet. So Yvonne and them do a great job, the staff there is very relatable, they're not real off-putting, they're not like, oh, well, I'm so-and-so and you have to be this way. So it does work out for, to bring people in there, not as defensive or as, I guess, it's not very intimidating to go there. When you go there, they welcome you, you feel like you understand, they understand where you're from, and they're not really judging you. So it is make a lot more of an impact on people when they know that, okay, they've been there, they know where I've been, they're not looking down on me, and then it encourages more to come. So I believe the Warming Center is someplace that needs to stay open, it does need to be a priority for the county. There's so many places out here that are just not okay for people to be, and they are there because there is nowhere to go. If there's a place to go that's safe, I think they need to be able to be a priority of the county to keep it that way.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Donna Kernstein, and I'm in night security. This was my last semester in college for human services and going on for alcohol and drugs, but I put it on hold for a simple reason, this is my calling right now, I feel, because I can help and relate. And I have seen people come in and get sobriety there, just in the month I've been there. My vision of what homeless was before I started working there was way different. Like, there are mentally ill, there's elderly, there's young ones, there's some that, what would they do? Where would they go? And my heart, I have to, my heart hurts for them, you know, I just want to help them. If I was a millionaire, I'd give all my money for them, because they just, there's ones that, you know, that's just who they are. We all have to, we have to educate the public also on homelessness, and help educate the homeless on how to, the ones that are willing to change, you know? I think it's a good thing that it's open, I think it should be open all the time too, never shut down. More working issues, working on getting more transitional stuff in there to work with some of the people, to maybe get them in jobs and stuff like that, so it's a good thing, it just takes progress. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is my friend.
And my name is Jennifer Alsop.
We have acute anxiety and PTSD, so we want to come up together. Yvonne, when I came in, she grabbed me with her arms and she gave me a huge hug, and she said, "I am safe now." And I have grown a foundation and gotten the strength while I've been there to tell my abuser that I no longer want to be there. There's such healing at this place, mind, body, and spirit. She is the most awesome, and her staff as well. And having that open at night is great, but there's a lot of us who suffer from physical ailments, mental ailments, you know, like dialysis, or it's a warming shelter, it warms us at night, but we also need that for the afternoons as well, because I found myself outside cold during the day, and I fight a lot of body pain, so my immunities are low. And I don't believe that it should be shut down, I really believe that this is a really good positive thing. I am moving on with my life, I'm healing in a way that I could not do at the women's shelter over and over again. Yvonne is like a superhero to me, and what she does and everything, I admire her, and I have the utmost respect for her and all the staff. I just, I can't say how much they are helpful, whatever's going on, they take time for each individual person, and we get through, and there's a lot of people are getting on with getting things done. And if I didn't have this foundation, I would have froze in the snow eight times over and been a meat popsicle. So I have much love for Yvonne, and I too want to volunteer there, and please help us out, keep it open during the daytime. And I have bad PTSD, I need to have some place to nap in the afternoon.
And this is my first time ever speaking out loud, I'm usually the shy one. When I first got to Yvonne's shelter, I was very scared. I'm from Washington, and I'm a victim of domestic violence, my ex-boyfriend threatened to kill me and cut off my head and hurt my cat and all that. I put him in jail, his cousin-in-law took me down here and rescued me away from my family up there in Washington. And when I got to Yvonne's place after his cousin kicked me out, she said that also that I was safe, and that no one should be hurt like that. And without her and the clients and the employees there, I wouldn't be up here right now talking. I'd still be shy, and I'd be scared and timid, and I do have a lot of bad anxiety, and I am mentally disabled, and I am scared for my life to be out on the streets. Please don't close this down, please. I don't want to die, and I don't want to live on the streets anymore. They're helping me out, helping everybody else out too. Please don't close it down, I beg you. Thank you.
I personally have found three men in their cars OD'd or freeze'd.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Danielle. I haven't been a resident of Lake County very long, and up until recently, I was a business owner of 15 years, had my family, I was stable. I worked at the Building Bridges Homeless Shelter in Ukiah. It started out as a warming shelter, only at night, everybody had to be out by 7:00 AM. Rain, shine, cold, didn't matter. We see, we saw the need for extended hours, we saw the desperation in these people with no place to go. Within this last month, I myself became homeless. I lost everything. Tragic fire took my home, my property, my business. I lost my kids because of it. I was on the streets, somebody told me about the shelter here in Lakeport. I showed up, they welcomed me, didn't judge it, the whole ambience there is, it's like a family. They care for the clients who come through those doors. They make it a personal effort to make each and every one of us feel welcomed. I haven't been there very long, and already they know me by my first name. This community is coming together to stand and say, "We need help. We need these extended hours, we need this to continue on." I understand budgetary concerns, I understand the politics of everything, but this is a necessity. These are people's lives, and a decision in favor of this shelter means taking a stand as an entire community, not just a portion of it. We need this shelter. We need you to support this shelter. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Jordan, and I've been in Lake County for about eight years. Some of you probably know me, I've worked at a lot of nonprofits and a lot of direct support. I've been working with Sunrise and the Shelter for about a month and a half now, and I've been impressed since day one that I came in there. I've been doing a lot of the data entry on the HMS, as you guys probably know about, to stay in compliance, and there's been over 100 clients that have received services. I also go down to the shelter, and I've just been impressed as well, the amount of community support. Every time I go in there, Yvonne is interrupted by someone else bringing in clothes or pillows, and it's just been an amazing support. Lake Family Resource Center, the Sheriff's Offices, all the hospitals, Narcotics Anonymous comes in every week, it's just been a really big team effort with the community that I've seen, in a way that is helpful to the clients, in a way that's more of a wraparound service. I've noticed that a lot of the services here is just a Band-Aid to keep them going, but I've noticed that the shelter here is a whole support to clients, that it's not just, oh, let's get you housing and then we'll forget about you until you need housing again. No, it's the workers sitting down with the clients and asking them, "What are your needs?" And it's very client-based. And as you can tell, with all of the clients here, they feel safe, and that they aren't going to be turned over to another agency that's just going to forget about them. And so I really think that the shelter needs to stay open to just keep people okay with their situation and to have the motivation to keep moving forward, because they know that people have their back. And so I really urge you to keep the shelter open, because everyone deserves somewhere safe to go. This weather is terrible, we have, I'm not from this county, but my dad always says, "You're the county of floods and fires." And I know that that's not going to change anytime soon, but I know that this shelter is changing people, so I urge you to keep it open, because not as, there's also the staff here, but there's also the community support. So please, do what you can.
Yeah, my name's Eric Gregory, and I try to keep it short, but I'm a professional, like, last year, I was a professional, I worked with horses, and I made great money, but then just got in an argument, you know, I ended up on the streets, to say, to put it that way, and went from making like $5,000 or $6,000 a month to making zero, and ended up running around looking like a, you know, homeless person on the street, you know, but when I once was, you know, perspective, professional, and it, one thing I just would say that this has done for me is, I mean, you can't really go from that back to where you were before, because people see, you're that guy that was, you know, out in front of Safeway or something like that. And so what it's allowed me to do is to just get centered, get back in my space, and I mean, I've got still all the skills, I mean, that I had before, and so I, you know, just trying to get back to where I was. The center's really helped me do that, get some stability, stop running around, you know, like, you've got to keep stepping, is the saying, you know, and it's, it's hard to, it's hard to get back to where you need to be, but you're just, you know, looking at the next minute, what you got to do. And so it's really helped me take care of the things I need to do, and I've started working again, you know, went trips with horses yesterday, and got more this week, so hopefully I'll just keep that up and get back to work, you know, and it's just, it's impossible to think, because a lot of the people I work with, like, they're conservative, you know, they don't like people that are all, you know, running around and looking crazy, and, you know, they like people that are stable, and so I got to be that before I can get, you know, work with them, you know, and so I really appreciate what Yvonne's done, and to see the opportunity to get back to where I was before. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tim Raymond, and when I first got there to help Yvonne open, I was amazed, I've never seen anything like that. I've been in many counties, many other states, nothing like this around, and I do appreciate it, and they know how to work with everybody, the developmentally disabled, the mental health, and I think it should stay open, I appreciate that, thank you.
My name's Dennis Westlake, and I'm 69 years old, and where my camp was is under four feet of water. I had, you know, I went to the hospital and they told me if I don't, that I couldn't go back to my camp, I either go to jail or to the Warming Center. So that's where I'm at, I got medical problems, and they help you, and I think it should stay open for people that's got everybody, you know? It's hard, you know, being out there, I've been out there two and a half years, you know, it's been rough. I spent two winters out there, and lucky, I wouldn't have made it through this winter if it wasn't for the Warming Center. Thank you.
My name is Anna McCumber, and I'm a, been a Lake County taxpayer since 1975, and I'm asking you to please leave, leave this open, and help me to be proud of Lake County, and the taxes that I pay are going towards a really good, a good thing. If you take a wilted plant and you put it in good soil, and you water it and fertilize it, what happens to it? It flourishes. These, I've come to know a lot of these people, I'm a member of New Hope, and they come, and I've come to really appreciate them, and they are gifts and talents buried in these people that need to be brought out, and this, this center is fostering that. So please, please, keep the center open year-round, thank you.
Okay, I'll check the Zoom room. Okay, I'm not seeing any other public input, so we'll close this item and move on to 6.2, our 9:07 item, Presentation of Proclamation of Appreciation for Registrar of Voters Staff, Poll Workers, and County Key Staff. and county key staff on successfully conducting the June and November 2022 elections. And Supervisor Spatier.
The last thing Maria wants to hear is please come on up and bring everyone with you. So all democracy starts with people. And the elections, the integrity of elections gives people a voice. And ensuring that our elections are done correctly, done transparently, is important. And here we have a large group of people, many of whom volunteer their time to ensure that our elections go smoothly, hence this proclamation to be thankful. And I'm sure there's many others not here. I know there's probably one on Zoom, if not more. But I'll go ahead and start reading. Proclamation of appreciation for registrar of voters, staff, poll workers, and county key staff on successfully conducting the June and November 2022 elections. Whereas, the county recognizes the many contributions of the dedicated individuals committed to providing efficient and effective services that protect voter rights in Lake County. And whereas, the registrar of voters office strives to understand customer needs, improve processes, and enhance the quality of services provided to the voters of Lake County. And whereas, on June 7, 2022 and November 8, 2022, the registrar of voters, staff, poll workers, and county key staff were critical elements in assisting in the election preparation, execution, and reporting process. And whereas, these individuals perform their jobs with professionalism and integrity. And whereas, the county expresses appreciation for their dedication and commitment to conducting two successful elections in 2022. And whereas, the county wishes to say thank you for an exceptional job. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake, on behalf of the registrar of voters, does hereby congratulate Lourdes Ponteleone, Savannah Fect, Yasenia Lopez, Shauna Higgins, Julie Thompson, Leilie Corleone, Jim Eminiger, hopefully I'm saying all these names right, and I apologize in advance if it's wrong, Karen Fitch, Diane Fridley, Donna Hines, Marilyn Pivnisca, Judy Reynolds, poll workers, IT staff, as well as building and grounds staff members, commending them for their service to the county and the community, pass and adopted this 28th day of March, 2023. I just want to add that we may be out of the realm of our pandemic for COVID, but the laws and rules that were created during COVID still apply to this day on how we're doing our elections. The process for the mail-in ballots, you have to volunteer to truly understand the work that goes behind the, the actual elections themselves, to check signatures, to double-check that the number on the ballot matched the numbers that was sent out. It is very detail-oriented and each ballot probably gets looked at at least four or five times before it's finalized. What I appreciate is some people say, well, why aren't we done earlier than the 30 days? And I need to hit that elephant in the room real quick. We are waiting to ensure that your vote counts. We have 30 days by state law to wait for you to come and fix your address or fix your signature to ensure that it was truly you that voted in your mail-in ballot. And I couldn't appreciate it more that our registrar of voters would prefer to wait the full 30 days to ensure every single vote can count rather than stopping it short so that your vote eventually is not counted. I just want to share that appreciation, that we have such great value in this process and our democracy. And I want to thank everybody up here for the work that they do.
Good morning, everyone. So I wanted to say thank you to my staff for all their hard work, our extra help employees included. And Buildings and Grounds, a big shout-out to you guys because whenever we need you guys to come out and do something for us during election, you guys are always very helpful. So thank you, guys. I didn't have all your names on here because I didn't want to forget anyone. IT staff also, thank you for them, for their support during election time. They help us go out during election time as roving inspectors. They help us do training and they help us post the results on election night and as well as updating our website. So, you know, thank you to everyone that's here and everyone that's not here, the poll workers. We couldn't have our polling places without them. Thank you so much to them because they are the backbone to our democracy. And when you guys do go to the polls, thank them for a hard day's work. So, thank you.
I believe it's picture time.
If I can just add, as they're filtering back, my personal thanks to, I worked in elections briefly and I also want to thank the Lake County community. It does take a lot of hard work for the Elections Department to put it on, but it also takes the voters to have a clear understanding of, of how these elections work. And unlike other places in the country, we didn't see drama here on Election Day or before Election Day. And I think that stands as credit to the professionalism of election staff. And I think that professionalism pays dividends because when it does come time to vote, whether it's by mail or in person, the citizens of this county have full faith that their vote is going to be counted appropriately. So thank you to the staff for doing what they're doing. Thank you all to the voters. You make all of this work. Thank you.
Do we have any public input? I'm not seeing it in Zoom. All right. I will close this item. If there's nothing left from the board, then we'll move on to our 6.3 item. 9:30 a.m., A consideration of overview of Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians and Lake County Watershed Protection District, Adobe Creek Managed Flow Strategy Project being submitted under the Office of Planning and Research, 2022-2023's Adaptation Planning Grant Program. And B, review and consideration of letter of support from the Board of Directors of the Watershed Protection District for the proposed project and water resources.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Marina Delajanas. I am the Deputy Director of the Lake County Water Resources Department. I'm speaking to you all this morning on behalf, serving as the Board of Directors of the Watershed Protection District. And I do have a few friends who will be joining me via Zoom for this item. But as Chair Pisca stated, I do have two parts of this item. One, it is a brief overview of the proposed project that our department is serving as a co-applicant as, Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians is serving as the lead. And then a review of a letter of support that we are kindly requesting the Board of Directors of the Watershed Protection District review and sign today to include into the grant application. So just real quick, the grant application is due March 31st, so a quick timeline. This is one of the last steps, but our team at Flow West and Big Valley have been working very hard to prepare, to prepare the grant application. And I am joined by Bethany, Skylar, and Sarah Ryan, Big, with Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians. And Skylar and Bethany are joining us from Flow West. I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to Bethany and Skylar and Sarah to do a brief overview of the project, and then I'm gonna take it away to highlight the letter of support. So go ahead, Bethany, Skylar, and Sarah.
Sarah, you wanted to start with something, correct?
Sure, yes, thank you. Good morning, Board. Thank you for taking this item up. As you know, Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians and other tribes have been working very hard, along with other members of the community, to protect the Clear Lake Hitch. We believe that this project is something that has been needed for a long time. I think you agree as well that there's, there's water in those reservoirs that could, through some good timed releases, be able to help the downstream flows so that the spawning hitch can make it up and back to the lake. And also so that their fry can make it back to the lake. So this presentation, the short, short presentation is just what the project will entail, and I thank you for your consideration. Go ahead, Bethany.
Sure. Hi, my name is Bethany Haggenjos. I work with Flow West. We're an environmental consulting firm. We've long been working with Sarah on issues related to Clear Lake water quality and improving habitat conditions for the Clear Lake Hitch. This proposal is to fund a cooperative strategy for timed reservoir releases and monitoring to improve Clear Lake Hitch in-stream habitat and survival in Adobe Creek. The hitch is an endangered, threatened species under the California Endangered Species Act and an important species to the culture and economy of the indigenous peoples of Clear Lake. Hitches live in the open water of Clear Lake and migrate into tributary streams during the reproductive season where they spawn, generally in April through May time period. The embryos hatch after approximately three to seven days and become larvae, free swimming. And they go back to the lake three or four days later. So there's, there's generally a couple-week timeframe for them to go up into the tributary streams and spawn and hatch and go back down to the lake. So according to places like the Center for Biological Diversity and Robinson Rancheria Environmental Center, hitch historically spawned in all of the 17 stream systems tributary to Clear Lake. But current research indicates a profound decline in the hitch population in Clear Lake from historical population levels. And in recent years, the hitch have only been documented spawning in biologically significant numbers in two of the 17 Clear Lake tributaries, and that would be Adobe Creek and Kelsey Creek. And of the two, Adobe Creek typically supports the largest hitch runs. And so reasons for population decline include habitat loss and in-stream flow reductions. And since Adobe Creek in-stream flows are managed by two upstream flood control reservoirs, Highland Springs Reservoir and Adobe Reservoir, there's an opportunity to augment in-stream flows and to prevent stranding events and improve Clear Lake hitch survival in the face of climate change especially. So this project builds upon existing work done in Clear Lake to improve Clear Lake hitch survival, sorry, to improve spawning and rearing habitat for the Clear Lake hitch, as well as water resource planning conducted by Lake County. And this would be a cooperative project between the Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians and the Lake County Watershed Protection District, taking place over two years following grant approval, which is supposed to occur this summer. The objectives of the project include development of a communication pathway and responsibility protocol, as well as a flood release and monitoring strategy. So the project will include, the plan is to include two timed flow releases and monitoring of downstream effects during the hitch adult migration season in Adobe Creek. And so that's the project we're asking for your support today on.
All right, thank you so much, Bethany. I'm gonna go ahead and kindly ask Matthew to share the screen for the letter of support.
My apologies, I'm not prepared with the letter. Did you email it?
I did. It's in our package. It's okay. Perfect, thank you. All right, so with the letter, as Matthew pulls that up, and it is in the packet, thank you. We are also, the Board of, or the Watershed Protection District is also gonna be including a letter of commitment that will go in tandem with the Board of Directors' letter of support to include in the proposal. So I just wanted to make that known. I'm not gonna go ahead and read this entire letter here. It was included in the board packet. But I would like just point to two edits that the, that was included in this letter. So if you go to the second paragraph, the second sentence, the tribe is already experiencing the impacts. And then a few sentences down, it says, prolonged drought is impacting the tribe through the impacts. Those should be the Clear Lake Hitch, not the tribe. Yeah, so those are two minor edits that I do want to make known. If the Board does approve this letter of support, those would be changed to, to make that clarification.
Okay. Anything from the board this time? Is that a, yes? Okay, go ahead.
Just a quick question. I'm in full support of putting this out. I know we've kind of had the conversation about whether this was a viable option or not, and this helps us figure that out. But I know that the letter kind of speaks in a way that was maybe around the January time before we got immersed in water. I know it slightly speaks to climate change and future droughts. I just was wondering, do you think that it needs to have any kind of changes to ensure that they don't look at it like, we need help today when our creeks are really doing much better than they were two years ago or last year? Because, yes, it's gonna happen again. And I just want to make sure that, I just wanted to ask the question, is it strong enough to make sure that they understand this is for a future cause and this year, not just looking at the current status of how we are? Just wanted to check in on that.
Yeah, that's a good question. And I'll let Sarah answer after I provide a brief comment on that. I feel the letter as it is today is sufficient enough. We acknowledge that we did get some recent rains. That's great. We love all the water, but as you stated, this is not the last drought that we are gonna be dealing with. So I do think that how it stands today, it suffices and I think it'd be appropriate. But I will pass it over to Sarah to see if she has any additional comments.
Thanks, Marina. The, the only thing I would add to that is, you know, because the governor's recent drought proclamation and also CDFW's letter stating that, you know, they're, they're continuing to find funding to support measures to protect the Clear Lake Hitch, that we are really in it for the long haul and taking, taking this opportunity to, to do this type of study and to, to codify how releases are gonna happen is, you know, we, we don't think that the hitch are out of the, out of danger. There's definitely been some, some scene during this, during this spring. But we don't think that any language changes needed just because, you know, it's, the governor is already committed to, to seeing this through. And, and they know the conditions of the, of the hitch.
Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this forward. And just to clarify, so many bouncing balls in the air. So I think we had talked briefly a week or so ago about a feasibility study. This is that feasibility study we're talking about today that would take a look at how we actually do manage flows out of the structures.
Yes, that is correct. Right, Bethany?
Yes, I'm not aware of what was talked about a week ago, but that sounds right to me.
Okay. And then in addition to, I mean, it's a lovely question. If we manage flows, what would happen? And it's in support of the Adobe Creek Conjunctive Use Project. But I think one of the questions we want to look at is not only what would we do with managed flows downstream on the way out to the lake, but how well can these structures actually deliver those managed flows? So is that part of the scope of this feasibility study is to not just calculate what we might do with managed flows, but also the current capacity of the structures? So that if modifications are needed or improvements needed, we can filter those proposed changes up to the actual Conjunctive Use Project or the, the rebranded Big Valley Fish Habitat Project?
Yes, that would be my preference is that when we get together during our first several meetings, we talk about, you know, what's feasible, what's possible at the dams. And at the end of this, we're going to be, you know, putting forward a set of next steps and limitations or what went well sort of stuff. So that would be included in a memo at the end of the project.
Thank you. That'd be incredibly useful information. So thank you for that clarification.
Okay, do we have anything from the public? All right, I'll bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the letter of support for the Adobe Creek Managed Flow Strategy Project with the amendments as stated by Deputy Director Delajanas.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, wish me success. Thank you.
Thank you, Flow West. Thank you, Big Valley. And of course, thank you, Board of Supervisors.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so we have, get through some of our non-timed items. I, do you want to do 7.7? Let's do that. 7.7, Consideration of Updated Advisory Board Application from the Clerk of the Board.
So attached from our discussion last week is the updated advisory board application. I removed the felony conviction question, and I asked if they're registered to vote because some of the advisory boards require that, so it's a good question for like the cemetery districts.
Oh, cemetery districts require that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I appreciate the addition of the Code of Conduct. Anything from the board at this time? Okay. Anything from the public?
Hi there. My name's Kurt McKelvey. I'm a resident of Lucerne. I put in my application to the Lucerne Area Town Hall back in January, and I have not seen any Lucerne Area Town Hall applications on this current agenda item, and it's kind of concerning to me because I know that there is more than a quorum of worth of people.
Yeah, this is about the application, and we-
An application turned in?
Yes. It's not about the Lucerne Area-
I understand that. That's my concern. Why is there no applications on this current agenda item?
This has nothing to do with that. This has to do with the Code of Conduct and a new application.
Oh, okay.
So there's another item that maybe you're speaking.
Yes, 7.6.
I was under the impression this was for appointments to councils.
No, this is just the application form. Item 7.7.
Oh, actually, I do have a question about that. So this is the new application form for councils?
Yes.
Okay, so I do have a question about that. Does, if this new application is passed, does that mean that the members of the public like myself that applied back in January and so forth would have to reapply with the new form, or would our current applications be considered?
That is a good question. I would think that we would want the new application filled out so there's an agreement to the Code of Conduct.
I would think that they would just need to sign the Code of Conduct, however, their application can be basically kept still.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, County Council. Okay, any other public comment on this item? Okay, we'll close it out, or close public comment and bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the updated, oh, Madam Chair, I move to approve the updated advisory board application, including the Code of Conduct.
I'll second that. I'm going to quickly comment that I won't be supporting it because of the reasons I stated last week. I do believe the question on the felony conviction should stay in there. Second.
Do you mind if I ask a quick question before we go to final vote?
Sure.
Would the individual bylaws dictate what may happen if Code of Conduct is breached? Because there is no enforcement or any, just kind of checking in how Code of Conduct is in play now versus if you don't follow Code of Conduct? Is that within the bylaws of each committee that it's decided on how to deal with that? Just kind of curious.
I think we'd have to look at each individual bylaws to make that determination.
Okay.
But this is with, this is in agreement with the county and not the individual advisory councils, so if there's a complaint, maybe it would come here?
There's just no explanation of what would happen or what potential consequences or anything like that, or what's the process?
Sure.
I feel like we need something a little further. I just thought of that. I apologize for just thinking of it.
No, we can work on a process and share that with the board. Sure, go ahead.
I would think that the application would basically be the drawing line when the application is signed and acknowledged, regardless of the bylaws. I think that this application would take precedent, but I'm not, I think we'd have to look into that.
Well, one possible scenario is for, if there is a Code of Conduct violation, that it could be taken up as an item in the council meeting, but there, but along with the process of actually addressing, being addressed before the Board of Supervisors, after that takes place. That could be part of the procedure, and it could also, the board does have some discretion of, oh, well, as far as the bylaws are concerned, it could be, that's also possible, a possible option to have it incorporated in the bylaws or have it referenced in the bylaws of the council.
We have so many advisory councils, it would be difficult to go back and edit each and every one of their bylaws, but if we approve this today, can we ask for follow-up for procedurally how issues would be handled if they're, if they're violation of the bylaws?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm okay with that.
Okay. So we do have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you.
What about item 7.6, sir?
Yeah, I was just looking at that. Good idea. All right. 7.6, Consideration of the Following Advisory Board Appointments: Child Care Planning Council, Emergency Medical Care Committee, Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee, and Mental Health Board. And this is Clerk of the Board. Okay, I'll do it. The Child Care Planning Council, Maria Garcia is on their list of members, so she just needs to be formally appointed, and then the rest are just up to her board. Okay, so Child Care Planning Council, one. Consumer, Maria De La Garcia, consumer. Any comments on this appointment? Go ahead.
I do see that she works for Lake County Office of Education, and I think that's an appropriate connection for the Child Care Planning Council. So looking forward to approving her application.
Okay, public input on this item or on this appointment? Okay, bring it back to the chair, or I'm sorry, bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, move to approve Maria Garcia to the Child Care Planning Council.
All in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, appointments confirmed. Next, Emergency Medical Care Committee. We have 12 vacancies, two for the hospital, Sutter Lakeside and Redbud Hospitals, one Community College District, four consumer-interested group, two ER-affiliated medical care coordinator, and two fire departments, and one paramedic representative. So today, we have Jason Chan, a paramedic, and Tim Stevens, Sutter Lakeside Hospital. Supervisor Spatier?
Both are crucial to the conversation, so looking forward to approving these two.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just looking at the categorization, I didn't catch it on the last one. So on the application, he's listed as a ground ambulance provider. Unclear that he's actually a paramedic. Okay, says they're a paramedic, okay. But that's the thing with these big committees and these categories, so is he a paramedic or a ground ambulance provider? Is he both? But now that I actually see it listed somewhere on this application, I see that's okay. Thank you.
Okay, public input on this item? I mean, on this appointment-
I have public input on this agenda item.
I'm sorry, this is for the appointments of Jason Chan-
I understand. I'd just like an opportunity to speak on this agenda item at some point. Thank you.
Yes, but we're talking about these two appointments. Anybody else on these appointments? Okay.
There's nothing more. I'll move to make the appointments to Jason Chan and Tim Stevens to the Emergency Medical Care Committee in the categories designated.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, appointments passed. Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee, we have four vacancies. One, Fish and Wildlife Conservation, one District Two General Membership, and two, Tribal Government. With Luis Santana to be reclassified from District Three General Management to Fish and Wildlife Conservation. Corolla Kennedy, Tribal Representative, Sarah Ryan, Tribal Representative, Chris McLeod, District Two, and Justin Ratcliffe, District Three. Supervisor Spatier?
So I said this last time that we approved some people into this committee. Last time, it was a bunch of folks representing Ag, looking for ways to fit within different categories. I feel like our conversation about the hitch is absolutely impacting what the future of Fish and Wildlife conversations will be within the committee, and I see four folks here that are in connection with tribal government and tribal work for individual tribes located here. I feel that we said no to some last time to ensure that there was some equity and representation, and so I would like to deny Chris McLeod, District Two, representation, to ensure that we have as close to equity as possible in the group.
Well, I think the difference last time was we had somewhat, we had two representatives that were certainly with the Ag community, but one of them, because they hunted and fished, would have been considered for the conservation, even though they don't technically have, you know, work with a conservation group. So I think it's a little bit different, but District Two is your district, and so it would be your appointment, so I, you know, that's up to you.
And had I seen Chris with interest to the Fish and Wildlife prior to the conversation of the hitch, this seems to be a move to try to stack chips in one area for ensuring that there's more voices for, I, between the call from Ag and the other side call from tribes, I just, we need to make sure it's a very equitable group in the voices that will be represented here, especially if they will be discussing the hitch, which is a very sensitive subject. We saw it before us, but I just want to make sure that I said the same thing about Ag last time, the fact that the previous person who wanted to got called out by Ag and said not to put their application in so that there could be better Ag representation. The whole thing just bothers me about where we're heading with Fish and Wildlife. It's not the individuals. It's the politics that is slowly leaking into this Fish and Wildlife conversation. I think the conversation is necessary, but the way that we're doing this, it just feels like it's agenda-based rather than actual interest in Fish and Wildlife Conservation.
Okay, so your seat's been vacant for a while, so are you looking for-
I am working on it, yes.
Okay. Supervisor Crandall?
I couldn't agree with you more, Supervisor Spatier. That's why Luis Santana, he was the District Three appointee, so I moved him to Fish and Wildlife because he has that background. And then Justin Ratcliffe is not part of either Ag nor Tribal, so that was one of my goals. I can't, I didn't know about Corolla or Sarah, so, but I don't even know if Corolla is the representative that was chosen from the Tribal Government, so I don't know if that needs to be vetted first or-
Did it say on her application? I know it's, Sarah stated that she was selected by Big Valley.
Right. I'll look at her application again.
So do you want to have confirmation?
I think we can, yeah.
Okay, so we'll just hold that one until we have confirmation.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public on these appointments? Not seeing any. Let me check the Zoom room. We have one hand up from Sarah Ryan. Go ahead, Sarah, unmute, state your name for the record, please.
Good morning, Sarah Ryan with the Big Valley Band of Pomona Indians. Yes, our Big Valley Business Committee or Tribal Council did ask me to sit on the, for the Tribal Government seat. I, and I did just check with Chris, let her know that it sounds like her application was being denied for that district, so she's asked me to keep the application in for me for Tribal Government, and I do hope that she could be reconsidered for District Two. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Okay, any other comment on, so this item is about these appointments, and I know you-
I understand that. I'd just like to get your confirmation that I will have an opportunity to speak on this agenda item after those appointments have been decided. I'd just like an opportunity to make a comment on this agenda item before moving on to the next. Thank you.
Yes, as long as it's understood that the item is consideration of following advisory board appointments, so we'll get to that at the end. All right. Bringing it back to the board for action, or Supervisor Green, did you have a comment?
Yeah, quick process question. Impliedly, what you're suggesting is that any applicant from a tribe would have to get Tribal Council approval prior to submitting an application. I don't necessarily agree with that.
No, I think if you represent a Tribal Government, which is what these positions are, that we shouldn't just choose anyone, it should come from that Tribal Government itself as far as who they chose.
Okay. And do we have constructive knowledge that each and every tribe has a, you know, knows that they're going to have to vet these people before putting them up for a committee assignment? Are there other committees we're going to impose that on? It's just a question. You know, on the one hand, one applicant went through a Tribal Council approval process, the other one probably, I don't know, either didn't think of it or their council didn't think of it, and I certainly didn't think of it until now. So I'm not saying you're setting a precedent here, but I'm seeing two very distinct situations here. So I'm just curious, if nobody else is stepping up from that tribe, you know, are you absolutely going to require like a letter? You know, do they need a permission letter from the Tribal Government to apply to represent that government on this committee? Because, you know, I don't see that procedure on our newly, our new application form, for example, so I'll defer to others that have better understanding of how the Tribal Government actually works, but, you know, I don't want to, it's hard enough to get applications in, so I don't want to add another barrier to entry, even if it's a temporary one.
I think we just need confirmation that that applicant's been selected by the Tribal Government, but Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, it is a pretty simple process. Obviously, individual tribal members cannot represent the tribe, so it's a pretty simple process for these advisory committees. If a member, and I can speak behalf of Middletown, a member wants to sit on advisory committee, simple conversation with Tribal Council saying, "Okay, you're going to be our representative, we're in favor of that, and we can move forward with it," and then they would have confirmation from there. As far as a letter, we don't provide no letters or anything like that. That won't happen. They speak publicly here, saying they're representing the tribe. Obviously, the tribes are listening. They'll understand who's representing, and just as the same as each and every one of us. We can't go out and represent the county without the board's approval. Truly that simple.
So in the current instance, does anyone have any actual doubt that this person, even though they don't have a letter indicating the council's support, that they do would in fact represent?
Well, I'm confident they're not lying on the application.
Well, there you go.
Okay. Supervisor Crandall?
That too. I would worry that if we appoint and then later the government comes forward and says, "We didn't authorize this," then we'd be in a pickle. So that's the only reason why I say if they just give even a verbal, or she says, "They gave me, they appointed me," or "They allowed me to be appointed," then that would be enough, I would feel.
Right. If there was someone that could confirm that today, then we could go forward. Vice Chair Simon?
And I'm confident that if Corolla's going to be filling this out, that she's going to be able to do that process. She's been in multiple meetings, working on this issue. She's been in multiple meetings, working on this issue for many years. So I think it's the right person. Just go through the process since it was brought up by Supervisor Crandall. I think waiting another week doesn't hinder us at all.
Okay, are we ready for action? Supervisor Spatier?
Just a final comment. I have great respect for Chris McLeod, went to college with her. I know her very well, as well as her family. Did send her a message this morning, tried calling her, was not able to connect. So she was aware of my decision and expressed my reasons behind my decision as well.
And if you don't find someone, this application will stay on file.
Yes.
Okay, are we ready for action now?
Madam Chair, I move...
I'm sorry. We have a public comment on this, which we, I'll allow, but it has to be within this item. And so this item is consideration of the following board appointments. So if your comment is within that...
I understand your specificity.
Yes.
I feel that that is intended to keep me from being able to give the comment that I'd like to give. And that comment is that a number of people that would establish a quorum of Lucerne Area Town Hall members...
Okay, but if you're speaking about Lucerne Area Town Hall...
It is a council, it is an advisory board that should be considered.
But it's not on this item. It's not on this item, and you're arguing with me.
However, I disagree with you.
No, I'm not having this debate with you right now. If you wanted to speak about the Lucerne Area Town Hall, you can come in public input the beginning of the meeting, come next Tuesday, and come anytime you'd like to speak about that.
Thank you for denying me the ability to give my public comment on this agenda item, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, now we're ready for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Luis Santana to be reclassified from District Three General Membership to Fish and Wildlife Conservation, Sarah Ryan as Tribal Representative, and Justin Ratcliffe as District Three General Membership.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the appointments are confirmed. Our last one is the Mental Health Board, three vacancies, two members at large, one family member of a past-present consumer. We have Simone Tatman and Stacy Bethel. Bethel, Bethel?
Bethel.
Bethel, okay. Comments from the board on this? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just excited to see these. These are going to help us stay up and running, get a quorum at our future meetings, and we're going to need that. The Mental Health Board, Mental Health Advisory Board does have a role in the selection of our new Behavioral Health Director when that happens somewhere down the road. And both these applicants look very strong to me, so I'll be supporting them.
Great. Anybody from the public on these two appointments? Nobody in the chambers are in Zoom, so I will bring it back to the board for action.
Thank you. There's nothing further, I move that we appoint Simone Tatman and Stacy Bethel, both under the categories of Member at Large for the Mental Health Advisory Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, appointments are confirmed. We still have 15 minutes. Let's do 7.4. Oh, I'm sorry.
Would it be appropriate to allow, because we just finished the appointments, because we're still considering advisory board appointments, to allow the public comment to come forward? I mean, I'm just asking.
Well, it's not on this item, but we do have an item coming up.
Yeah, 6.4, well, so. Would that be an opportunity for you to give your public comment?
I think so.
I believe so, because I would like to ask the question as to why our appointments are not on this particular consideration.
All right, well then.
You're being given an opportunity, and you're saying no. I don't know why you're saying no. No, not now.
Not now, at 6.4.
I'm not saying no.
Items, come back for 6.4.
Certainly, I will.
Yes.
I'm just saying that the comments that I'd like to make on this agenda item pertain to this agenda item, but that's okay. I'll save it for the other one.
Okay, thank you. 7.4, are we ready for that? Or is there something else that we could do quickly?
Maybe consent?
Oh, sure.
5.3 and 5 men.
5.3 should be pretty easy.
Okay, 5.3. Approve Amendment Number One to the Agreement between the County of Lake and Lisa Warner MBA for Support Services for Managed Care or Fiscal Year 2022-2023 in the amount of $40,000, and authorize the Board Chair to sign. And this is from Behavioral Health. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the reason for pulling this item, if I remember correctly, there are two contracts within one attachment. It was an accident to have both of those contracts. And so when looking at the attachment that speaks to the amendment that we are looking to consider, only the first page, one of one, is what we are looking at. The second page and third page are, I guess the third page is just the tracking. But the second page is for a completely separate contract that has nothing to do with what we should be approving, and I just wanted to make sure and segment what we would be approving so it doesn't get confusing.
Go ahead.
Steven Carter, Interim Behavioral Health Director. What Supervisor Spatier just explained is correct. The attachment has been fixed and sent to Johanna with just the Amendment One for Lisa, and then the tracking sheet, and that's what should be considered, not the second page, which is for a contract coming at a later date.
Okay, any comments from the board on that? Anybody from the public? Not seeing anybody in Zoom. Okay, bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Amendment Number One to the Agreement between the County of Lake and Lisa Warner MBA for Support Services for Managed Care for Fiscal Year 22-23 in the amount of $40,000, and authorize the Board Chair to sign as amended for the contract attachment on our packet.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes, great. And then now, it looks like we've got our Climate Resiliency Officer. And we can go back to Item 7.4. Consideration of the County of Lake Acting as Lead Agency on a Grant Application to Provide Funding for the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority, Lake County Resource Conservation District, Lake County Fire Safety Council, and the Lake County Office of Climate Resiliency, as well as funding to implement four hazard mitigation actions from the County of Lake's 2018 Hazard, Local Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? So as your board may recall, part of my duties as your Chief Climate Resiliency Officer is to apply for at least four grants per year. And I have been working with the Lake County RCD via Megan McClure, who works for a consulting company called Jade. She contracts with the RCD on a grant application through the Office of Planning and Research, the Adaptation Planning Grant. And as you know, sometimes for your grants, they make an announcement, you have an idea, and then you listen in on a webinar, and it changes a little bit. So through the last month or so, the scope has changed a little bit. And then our, the Risk Reduction Authority meeting in February had to be canceled, so it couldn't go before the RRA. So this particular grant is due on Friday. The County of Lake would act as the lead agency, but it would primarily fund the administrative support for the RRA. One of the major items is, let's see, on here, the action number two in our Hazard Mitigation Plan. The public education portion is part of my work plan. It's part of the vision of the RRA, and it's also a mitigation action in our HMP. And so that really started the conversation to look at the, you know, the other mitigation action items and to see, we can't do all of them with the funding because it's the maximum grant award is only, is $650,000. But we can prepare to do prep work for that. And so for administrative support for my office, the Office of Climate Resiliency, as you know, that's covered by the county. So it would fund some of that, fund administrative support for the RRA, seek grant funding to do the implementation on all of these. Yeah, and so I'm hoping that you think that's a good idea.
Great. Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, well, appreciate this coming to the board. Obviously, the work that's been put into it puts us in a good position. As everyone knows, we have, NCO was no longer able to support the RRA, and that's always been the challenge of having that administrative support. We appreciate the board allowing the county admin to step up and do that at this point. But this gives us an opportunity for a long-term solution, and then to look at other items as we have our Climate Resiliency Officer here to do some of the legwork to continue this on. This is a grant opportunity that I think we've been looking for, and we'll be reaping the benefits, obviously, of having someone who's constantly looking at this for the future. So currently appreciate that, Terry, and the collaboration with RCD and everyone else. So hopefully you'll get support of the board today, and it'll just be continuing one more step forward for the RRA as it, you know, enhances its capacity.
Yep, and delighted of the quick turnaround with the, with this office. So it'll be great if that is really funded in May.
Yeah, me too. I mean, you usually don't get grants that have that quick of a deadline, so.
Yes.
Fingers crossed.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, happening so fast, I don't see who you're applying for the grant to.
Ah, it is the Adaptation Planning Grant Program through ICARP. I can't remember that acronym, through the Governor's Office of Planning and Research.
Excellent. Under Action 40, I'm guessing these are references that were imported from the Standing Fire Prevention Project. But BLM and Lake, Scotch Valley Water Conservation District are both mentioned. So I'm wondering, do we have actual engagement with the BLM and in particular Scotch Valley Water Conservation District? It's a landowner district, but I don't know if they're actively meeting. So just a question about, there's anticipated engagement with both BLM and the landowners within the prescribed Water Conservation District. Can you elaborate on that, or is that from a pre-existing plan or template?
Those are really great, great questions. Though Scotch Valley Water Conservation District does meet, now that there are a quorum of directors, I don't think they meet very often. My understanding is this was, the background for this mitigation action is in the Hazard Mitigation Plan. So the idea is to do sequel work for this area and to plan the project. I think that it is already laid out. We just have to pull everybody back together because when they did the plan in 2018, you know, that's several, several years ago. And there has been some work done in the area, and Clerk has got some funding to do some work. So we just need to make sure and check the scope. But we need the funding and the time to be able to do that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think they do have a new field director in Ukiah, so I just wanted to make sure Mr. Lavroff was apprised of this. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Supervisor Spatier?
Thank you very much for bringing this, making it happen. Obviously, very important to have the ability to have funding in order to fund lead agencies to lead this. I know at this moment in time, it kind of went back and forth from NCO to now our administrative office. From what I understand, there was some prospective folks that could take the lead. That's no longer the case. The plan with this money is to fund internally or to continue to seek out external lead agencies and use this funding for that.
Great question, external. It would not be internal to the county.
All for it.
Okay, public input on this item? Did I already do that? I don't think so. I'm not seeing anybody in Zoom. Bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I'd like to approve the County of Lake to act as the lead agency for the grant submission.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
And we will take a brief break. We'll come back at 10:30 for our, 10:30 timed item, and I'm sorry. I lost my...
I need a refill.
Ready, Sam?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, we will come to our 6.4, 10:30 a.m. timed item. Consideration of a Municipal Advisory Committee MAC. Transition of the Lucerne Area Town Hall Lath, initially known as Mirth, Middle Region Town Hall, to Surth, Central Region Town Hall. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes. Sorry about that. Yes, bringing this presentation forward to discuss the consideration for a restructure of the Municipal Advisory Committee from Lath to Surth. I've received numerous requests and feedback to allow for more inclusivity and engagement from the community of Lucerne. So Johanna, if you can pull up the presentation, I'll go through it, and we'll take feedback and comments. All right, thank you. Next slide, please. So as you know, the history of this MAC, the MACs for the Middle Region Town Hall for District Three, it was initialized back in 2017 by Supervisor Emeritus Jim Steele to provide the Board of Supervisors an opportunity to obtain advisory recommendations from the community. Middle Region Town Hall was the initial MAC for Lucerne. Other District Three MACs implemented in 2017 were the Western Region Town Hall and the East Region Town Hall, Earth and Worth. Mirth was transitioned to Lucerne Area Town Hall Lath in 2018. Next slide, please. As you can see, the old Mirth, well, the actual Mirth and Lath borders, boundaries are in this map. It's the Community Growth Boundary for Lath, and as you can see, the others, the yellow is Worth and the blue is Earth. So that is the boundary. This is the proposed boundary for Surth, which would be the full ZIP code of 95458, Boundary of Lucerne. Why Surth? Again, I received feedback that many citizens desire to attend and serve but are also excluded due to the current limitations of the Community Growth Boundary. The concept is to ensure more inclusivity and engagement from Lucerne and the Central Region of District Three. Earth has recently separated Paradise Cove due to the lack of involvement in which their ZIP code is that of Lucerne 95458. Other surrounding areas would now be included for more engagement. Next steps, gain feedback and comments from today's presentation, consider whether to continue as Lath or move forward to Surth. We will return at a later date with the findings and a path forward. Thank you, comments and feedback.
So why, why was the growth boundary considered rather than the ZIP code before?
And that was something Jim Steele did, so. Yeah, that's, that's why I'm considering the ZIP code.
Okay.
For more inclusivity.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I like the idea. But ZIP codes, I struggle with this too. I just, we just re-energized Scotch Valley and how it's drawn on our map with a Sharpie of what Scotch Valley is and what isn't. It's a blob of a valley, and it's not easily to parse geographically speaking. But I'm just wondering, is there anything bigger than a Community Growth Boundary but smaller than a ZIP code that has a more geographical basis? Because, you know, yeah, you want to be more inclusive, but if somebody's on the border of the ZIP code, you know, am I on the East Region or the Central Region? So it's, it's a bigger area, and it's easy to define because we can find a map of it. But are there any other geographical mapping tools or just anything? Anything between that, I guess?
That's what I discussed with Lon. And Glen Haven is the easterly border, or westerly border for Earth. And then on the other side of Nice, there is, the border of Nice is, is where that boundary is. So everything in between is not, is what is being considered. And so there's specific areas that aren't included as of now. And so there's specific areas that aren't included as of now. And so some of the folks that are living in these areas want to be a part of it. They can come to it because everyone's allowed to a MAC. However, they, they can't serve or they can't be a part of it. So they really feel like there's no use in going. So, yeah.
And you've been hearing from constituents in the areas where they're
Numerous.
They have no representation with the town hall.
Well, yeah. Yeah. So we want to be inclusive. We want to not exclude these folks and give them opportunity to come to the town hall.
Okay. Anyone else from the board before I open it up? Is Eddie, you doing with your pen there? Yes? Okay.
I was playing with it, but I'll say something. I appreciate the maps because in the memo, it didn't provide that level of information. So appreciate the information on the presentation to show that there is no more basically empty areas for any of your areas that your town halls speaks for, basically, because there will be representation for everybody. Obviously, the Board of Supervisors is the ultimate representation for any of the people. But I think that having a large participation in any of the meetings that we're in, whether it's subcommittees or right here, is always the attempt, at least, that I, I feel that we're aiming for. If, if that's something that you feel is a necessary thing for your community, you know best, on this board is what's needed for that community. So I'm in support.
Vice Chair, Simon?
Yeah. I think Supervisor Green's question is a good one. You know, I can just speak to the Middletown Area Town Hall that's been created, obviously. You know, it represents Anderson Springs, which is a separate community, Middletown, Hidden Valley, which are all different areas and different things. It even went up before the Cockberry Council was, all the way to the Fire District boundaries. And I think we agreed for both, we weren't going to change that. Was that changed?
So, yeah, the math boundaries originally were all of the South Lake Fire District. And so when the Cockberry Council decided to form, they went to go meet with the math to separate. And so they drew their boundary.
Did they finally get that done or? I didn't know if they ever finished.
Well, the math, the math, I think, still has the original boundaries. They have not changed their map, but Cockberry Council has their own map. And so far, nothing has.
And so obviously, inclusivity, you know, what I really like about the math and the Cockberry, it's, obviously Cobb enhances all the communities up there, which are all different. And then for Middletown is the same thing. It's kind of the, you know, District 1, 1 board. And I don't know if that was ever considered in the area of a larger board.
A super MAC? That's what they're called.
Of North Shore.
That's what they're called.
Just something to think, I don't even call it a super MAC, but probably would be. But like two representatives out of each district or something. Because I understand, and we also have not only members representing those, we do have members at large for different communities if they feel like, you know, hey, they're, because you have Hidden Valley, but then you have the backside of Hidden Valley, up to Rusel Grade there, that's kind of a portion, but not, and the Rancho's, which, so just a little bit different, all different communities. So I put it out there, fully support you however you're doing it, but looking at that opportunity too.
Well, I know the math had specific seats for representation originally.
Yes.
And I don't know if any of the other MACs have that, where they required a seat. I know there was a seat that was supposed to be for Cobb and that was never filled, but just another way of organizing.
Yeah, just conversation.
Well, and that's why the East Region Town Hall had changed their bylaws because they're having a hard time getting a representative from the Keys area. So they're left with four, but.
Yeah. I mean, that, that does happen.
Right.
Yeah. Anything else?
No, just in favor of inclusivity, you know, one large meeting that's bringing all the minds together at one time. Oh, thank you very much. I apologize. Forgot to click it. Thanks, Sam.
Okay, so I will open it up for public input. We'll start with the board chambers and then we will go to the Zoom room.
Good morning. This.
Can you start with your name, please? And you'll have three minutes.
My name is John Jensen. I'm the President of the Lucerne Area Revitalization Association. This is an interesting idea. It's a concept that should be discussed at the Lath, absolutely. It seems a bit premature to bring it to the board since it's a municipal area advisory council that the, your colleague has been attempting to shut down for months on end now. And to culminate that, he's attempting to entirely turn over the apple cart. The unfortunate aspect of this is that the supervisor has a distinct conflict of interest and should be told by Lloyd over here to recuse himself from this discussion because his wife is an advocate of a project that he has used as a means to shut down the Lath. There's no need to change the name. If you bring this to the Lath, you'll definitely find there's a bunch of people that would love to increase their sphere of influence. So bring it.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I somewhat respond to what he said?
Sure.
There is no conflict of interest. There's no, there's nothing that I have, I haven't even stated that I support anything that has to do with what they're talking about. This doesn't have anything to do with the Castle, obviously. That's what he's talking about. Has nothing to do with that. This has to do with the community reaching out to me and wanting to be a part of Lucerne, MAC, basically. So this isn't about anything else but that inclusivity. That's it.
Okay. Go ahead.
Hi there. My name is Kurt McKelvey. I also have concerns about this coming before the board, before any discussion at the Lath meeting, because I do know that there are a number of individuals, residents of Lucerne, that, that do find it important to attend Lath meetings and they, they do so in regularity. We've actually had some of our best attendance in December and prior to being shut down. And I also share in John's concerns, and it's not so much with the, the cancellation of the, the meeting in December at the Castle. That was, that was also concerning, but I, I believe it's due to the conflict of interest in, in regards to the, the project regarding the, the homeless shelter that's, that's being proposed to, to go in there. The community has been trying to give input on that since December. We had a special meeting, which seems to be being ignored, where a resolution was passed urging this, this board to not allow that project to continue. And then shortly after that, our council was essentially disappeared. You know, we, there's been no appointments that have been made for months. We're three months into 2023. We've got more than enough applications to establish a quorum. We've had that since January. And we have no council and it's completely unnecessary. And it was, it was at a time where we were actually increasing public participation and inclusiveness. And I think that it's somewhat contradictory to claim that this would increase inclusiveness, inclusivity, when the, there seems to have been, you know, multiple attempts over the last few months to actually decrease inclusivity by excluding the Lath entirely from existing. So I believe that it would be appropriate, rather than moving on this right now as the board, to include the community in that discussion. Because I, I believe that this may simply be an effort to bypass our current bylaw limitations. Because right now, you need to have attended at least two Lath meetings in order to be appointed. So we have applications in that meet those requirements. And I believe that in expanding this territory, an attempt will be made at revising the, the bylaws to make it to where whoever, you know, is, is, whoever our District 3 supervisor would like to appoint can be appointed, totally disregarding our existing bylaw limitations, which are there to ensure that the residents of Lucerne have a say as opposed to, you know, just anybody else that, that, you know. Essentially, there's, there's supposed to be a certain level of participation in the Lath before we can.
Your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
And I just, each and every advisory committee is appointed by the board. And it's not, it has to be appointed here by this body. So that's, maybe there's some confusion on.
No, no, there's no confusion. I understand that all the, the appointments need to be made by the, this board. However, the current limitations in our bylaws are there to assure that, that a certain level of participation is, is there. And, and there is enough applications to meet those requirements. So it's, it just doesn't make sense to me that, that you've been sitting on the applications, not appointing, denying the inclusivity of our Lath, but then saying that you want to increase inclusivity.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. And the other thing is, we're not making a motion on this today. My understanding is this is.
Presentation only.
Presentation. And then are you going to be having any community meetings for this discussion outside the board chambers?
I'm going to take what I get here with other comments as well and evaluate and conduct the findings and I'll come back.
Okay.
The community knows about this meeting and.
Okay.
Good morning. My name is Dan DeBonus. I just wanted to make sure I understand this correctly. All you're doing is expanding the current boundaries to include all of the 95458 ZIP code?
Yes.
I have no problem with that.
Oh, yes, well.
Because it goes beyond.
Well, yeah, he didn't come to the microphone, but yes, and changing the name.
Olga Martin Steele, Clear Lake Oaks. I am a member of the Clear Lake Oaks Earth MAC. And what I want to mention is that the district, as you know, is the largest geographical district, you know, in, in all of Lake County. And Earth had their kind of, you know, starts and stops. But in the end, they are having a meeting that is very inclusive of very sometimes disparate areas. So including Spring Valley, including the Keys, including High Valley, and they found a way to make that work. And it is, I think, very inclusive. And I, I see some similarities in, I think, what Supervisor Crandall is doing with formerly, well, I guess, still Lucerne Area Town Hall. So I support it. I think anytime you can add more interest, more people who may have different interests than a town proper, if that makes sense, that can only be a good thing.
Great. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers?
Hello, my name is Melanie Lim. And I am on, was on Lath. And I was only, I only attended for, actually, maybe three noticeable, noticed by the supervisors' meeting. And then all of a sudden, I was canceled from the council. I don't know what happened. I'm new to the, to the committee. I thought I was doing my job, my part. And then one day, I just, I saw that the, not that the Facebook page is where we should get our news, but I noticed that the Facebook page was erased. And that's where I got some of my minutes and my different information. And then I noticed that our whole council was deleted and nobody ever told me why. So I'm confused and a little bit concerned that something like this could happen when I was voted in and it says I had two-year term and all of a sudden I'm deleted and nobody told me what happened. So I don't know, is that like something that happens around here? Is that, I mean, because I've served on a, a board before and I've never experienced this. I feel like there's a little bit of drama and I don't want that, I don't want any part of that. I realize that we have a lot of work to do in, in our community and I want to do that. And I, I do appreciate the inclusiveness, but I don't want to be left in the dark. Like, I want to know what's happening, especially if I was voted in and I had a two-year term and then I wake up one day and I don't have any say in anything. So I would like an explanation, if there is one. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one and I gave one when I contacted her before and she stated she didn't want to serve anymore. And then when she turned in her application the next time, she stated a past town council member told her to reapply. So she was aware, stated she didn't want to be a part of it. The position that she served in was vacated by a previous seated council member. That position was vacated by another seated council member that didn't finish their terms from 2021. So that's, that's the explanation. I gave that before. Yeah.
So she picked up the term of the two people that had.
Right. Vacated their position.
So it's still that.
Yes. And we talked about this, so I'm confused.
No, we did not talk about that. I didn't know anything. Sorry. Sorry. I'm sorry. I don't want to argue or get involved. I know that you and I had our private conversation and when I said I wanted to quit, it was because of all the drama that was happening and you filled me in on some of the drama.
Right.
I don't want any part of that. I just wanted to serve my community. And no, I don't remember us talking about why it said two years and then I didn't, don't remember that I was taking over somebody else's term. That was never brought up. Just to be totally honest on my part, I don't remember that.
Okay.
That happens typically, I know, on the Cockberry Council where one person will have to resign and then they pick up the term of the person before them. And it, it, there's a confusion every time that happens. So it is a two-year term from the beginning of the person who's originally appointed.
Okay, well, when I applied, it was open. It said open. It didn't say that, anything about filling.
Point of order. We're well off the agenda item and I appreciate the willingness of people.
Hey, excuse me. I'm running the meeting here.
I'm still allowed to raise a point of order and point out that we are well off the agenda item, so.
We're working through some things right now.
If I can act.
Yes.
Also, if, if you assume that there was two years, you said you weren't reapplying in December. So you knew that you were only serving until that timeframe. So you knew, just like your colleague before you got an email that said he knew he was going to have to reapply on December 31st. So I'm just highlighting that this was known.
Okay, maybe I was not clear, but I don't remember that conversation. But maybe I'm not clear on how all of this works. So I apologize.
No, it's fine. It's fine.
If there was a misunderstanding, because I really had good conversations with you. I've never had a problem with you. You're a good person. But I came out on this wanting to serve my community and I'm just so, I was so confused. And when everything was canceled, I felt like I was in a bad place with the, I didn't know what was going on. I felt like there was some drama and there was some like bickering back and forth and I don't want any part of that. And that is why I said that I didn't want to reapply, but I did reapply.
Yes.
And then I did tell you that I reapply.
Right. And your application was accepted. We just are waiting for this to move forward and we'll go from there. But the other thing is, is that the only, the only meeting that was canceled was the December 15th meeting because it was.
February.
No, those weren't, those weren't canceled. But either way, that was the only one that I had canceled because there was a liability. And I mentioned that before when Mr. McKelvey came on January 10th, but for whatever reason, we're at, we're at it again, so.
Okay. So do you want to, is your comment now during public input or do you want to wait?
I can wait.
Okay. So I have some folks on Zoom. I'm going to get through all the public and then if you want to speak again, we can come back. Okay, so Haji Worf, if you want to unmute and state your name, you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, board members. My name is Haji Worf of Upper Lake, which is also in District 3. And I want to voice my support for the expansion of the Municipal Advisory Committee previously referred to as Lucerne Area Town Hall. Until now, limiting representation to the growth boundaries of the town of Lucerne has excluded many area residents from having a voice and allowed determined individuals to seize control of decision-making that affects beyond the scope of these boundaries. These individuals have abused their power and have forgotten they serve at the pleasure of the board. Their egregious behavior may have prompted the need to include a code of conduct to be added to the advisory committee application process. The brazen interruptions and accusatory manner displayed today are prime examples of the zealous behavior by those individuals, especially Kurt McKelvey. By expanding the area to include everyone within the vicinity of the Central Region can only be a positive move, widening the pool of candidates for membership and expanding the contribution of constructive ideas. I support the proposal to restructure and rename the Lucerne Area MAC to become the Central Region Town Hall. I believe it will be beneficial for those in the wider Lucerne area, as well as all of District 3. I thank Supervisor Crandall for bringing this issue forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Susan Kozad.
You want to, okay- Yes, I'm unmuted now, thank you. I don't have a prepared-
Can you state your name, please, for the record?
Susan Kozad. I am a resident and property owner in Lucerne. I'm also in support of expanding this. I feel that the town hall has gotten hijacked by personal political agendas, and I don't want to go into a community meeting feeling pressured to be on a side. This could be why there's not applications in, because it's just uncomfortable for a lot of us who just want to have a voice in our community. So, this is a solution to that. I think it does include people that should be included. I agree with Haji on almost all of her points. I also, I, it's naive to believe that, you know, anyone in 954-58 is not affected by what goes on, even in the wider area, Upper Lake, Nice. You know, what one does is affect, affects all of us. So, I guess, I would say that behavior does speak for itself today. I just want to have a voice in my community in a peaceful, non-hostile environment, and I think this is a great solution for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Betsy Khan?
Can I make a-
Sure.
A request before we keep going. If the public comments can be aimed at us and not specific public members, that is, to me, that is just an inappropriate use of public comment. Obviously, you have your free speech, but let's not create situations we don't need. Stick, stick to the item, please.
Go ahead, Betsy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Board of Supervisors. My name is Betsy Khan. I am a resident of Upper Lake. My, my interest in this is in ensuring the compliance and congruence with the county general plan, which defines specific area plans in which these bodies function. I think it's dangerous to make a rule that you're going to tie it to the zip code, although it makes perfect sense in this case to include everything between the two eastern and western regions. I think that's why it was originally called the Middle Region. And if you just want to change it to Central because of the symbology, that's one thing. Middle Region is, was perfect for it. The group itself decided they didn't like that name. That's up to you. You are the Board of Supervisors authorizing the formation and operation of these municipal advisory councils. But I would like to ask you, please, also keep in mind that it is associated with your general plan, and just last week, your community development director gave you an overview of the things that need to be done in order for us to be in compliance with the Office of Planning and Research guidelines, including the updating of those area plans very quickly. As it turns out, your shoreline community's area plan happens to be one of the most peculiar ones I've ever seen, and it does need to be revised radically to assign areas to the particular regions that they affect. And so that would be done in the updating of the area plans. But you should definitely include the geography that is important to the community. If you, if you make the rule that it's the zip code, it'll affect things like the permitting of commercial cannabis operations that were approved for, by the Planning Commission just a few weeks ago, in which the planners believed that the property in Scotts Valley was in the Upper Lake area plan. That needs to be clarified, and, and all of that needs to be done in terms of the particular territories that are authorized to serve. Otherwise, I think this is a great idea. I really appreciate allowing me to speak on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. And I, this isn't a rule that we're applying to all MACs. This is just-
It was just a-
A boundary that we're-
That's good feedback, because maybe we just used the map rather than the zip code, but that's the type of feedback I was looking for in order to, you know, make some findings and discussions, so. That's, yeah.
Well, I, I mean, I think different areas use different boundaries. If the zip code works for this instance, I don't think there's anything wrong with it, just like the fire district boundary was used in the, a case of Mass establishment, so. I don't think that there's a sweeping rule that we'll use for all MACs.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Next, we have Priest Martinez.
Hi, I'm Priest Martinez. I own a piece of land in Lucerne. And I also agree with making it central, the bigger demographic. I cannot comment on the meetings I went to, but I just want to make sure that, you know, I support, you know, being a part of it. I was not allowed to be a part of it at first, but, you know, having the demographic changes is huge for me and being there. So I hope that we do allow it to become the central and have everybody included. Thank you.
Thank you. And then our last hand up is Kathy Herdman.
I'm, okay, thank you very much for giving me a moment to speak. I am completely in support of expanding the area so that we can hear voices from all over the area. I've lived here for just about 18 years now, and I would love to see MAC move forward with positive contributions to making our community a better place to live. And so I support this very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you for giving me the, another opportunity to, to speak to the board. So I just wanted to clarify, I, I'm also in support of the expansion of the territory of the, the Lucerne Area Town Hall's representation. I have no issue with that. I think that's a great idea. My only concern is that this restructuring of the town hall will be utilized as a means of revising the bylaws to allow for, basically, to allow for, for different appointments than, than are currently. Basically, I, I'm concerned that, that this is basically just going to be used as a means of changing our bylaws so that the district supervisor can appoint whoever he wants. And I'm, I, essentially, as long as no change to the bylaws is going to be considered except for the expansion of the territory and the name change itself, as long as those are the only things changed in the bylaws, I'm all for it.
Is there something specific in the bylaws that you're concerned about?
Yes, well, there was a number, last year, our district supervisor attempted to have a set of bylaws passed through the LATH that would restrict the LATH from being able to represent the community or even itself to any agency. And there was specific language that said exactly that. The Lucerne Area Town Hall cannot represent the community or itself to any agency, governmental, you know, utility commission, anything. And we, I was able to raise awareness about that and stop that from happening. We went, I was then appointed. We passed a new set of bylaws that, that didn't have that language in it. And that's the approved bylaws that's, that's currently on record with the Board of Supervisors. And basically, I'm, I just want to make sure that, that the, if, if you guys do go forward with this change in expanding the territories and changing the name, that those are the only things considered, changed for these bylaws. That it won't be restricting the town hall's ability to represent the community or itself on other issues that relate to the community. One of the things I heard from, from EJ was that this, this restructuring was to make it more about, you know, road maintenance and things like that. So that kind of implies to me that there is a plan to sort of limit the scope of what the town hall can give input on, and that's concerning to me. So as long as that's off the table, and the only thing that's going to be considered is the name change and the territory, you know, restructuring, I'm completely okay with that. And, yeah, that's, that's basically all I wanted to say. Thank you.
So, it seems to me that the new council and the new advisory council will have the opportunity to look at their bylaws, go over them. If there's changes, then, then have them submit it here.
Right, and a couple things. The previous, before Mr. McKelvey's service as the LATH chair, the previous group had been working since like 2019 on new bylaws. There was a template that was given to the 2021 group. They worked through it along with Mr. McKelvey, finally got to a point of it, and, but they decided to use a different one. But that's fine. It's a template. It was a template that was brought forward. There was no, there was no attempt to try and take any type of representation. As Supervisor Simon said, we can't represent anybody, we can't represent the board without each other's approval. That was all that, that clause was. But for whatever reason, it was purported as something else. But it is what it is. The bylaws were passed. They're intact. But again, if this is restructured, the opportunity to recreate new bylaws would be something to think. But this is all consideration. We're getting input, and that's what it is.
One other quick question, if you don't mind, Madam Chair. Is, will there be appointments to the LATH before a vote is held on this matter?
It was stated in the presentation that we were going to conduct this first and then move forward after, with comments and consideration.
I believe that would be less inclusive of, you know, of the actual LATH. Because I believe that the LATH should be a part of that discussion if you're considering changes to the LATH. I don't think it's appropriate to make that decision prior to appointing LATH council members.
Noted. Thank you.
Okay, there's no more public comment, then I will close it and bring it back to the board. And do you have a timeline on what your next steps might be?
No longer, well, it depends on what the findings are. If there's a recreation of the resolution, I'm not sure if it implies right away. If it continues with LATH, we can move forward on that end. But I don't think anything longer than two to three weeks.
Okay, so pretty quickly.
Right. But I also have a, well, go ahead Supervisor Sabatier, but I have something to read from Lonnie Kane, the previous chair of LATH.
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, can he just finish?
You want me to go?
Yeah, go ahead and finish.
All right. So, this is from, it says, "My name is Mahilani Kane Urkiza. My family and I have been residents of the beautiful town of Lucerne for 20-plus years, where I've engaged in many lifelong friendships and acquaintances throughout the years. I proudly served on the Lucerne Area Town Hall from 2019 until May 2022, where I served as the last, the chair of LATH. You see, in the beginning of the year 2022, I lost my husband while I was fighting for my life in the local Sutter Lakeside Hospital. This was a very devastating time for me and my family, and I had no clue I was on this town hall, but was so appreciative to remain seated upon my release from Sutter. I was then able to attend a few meetings via Zoom, but I decided to resign my last six months of service from LATH to ensure I concentrated on my health and to grieve the loss of my husband, which was and still is devastating to me and my family. Slowly but surely, I'm recovering, and in the process, I have been reading and witnessing the activity of Lucerne and felt the need to give my experiences regarding LATH during my voluntary service. Mr. McKelvey was the vice chair, and Mr. Jensen was the records keeper during 2019 and 2020. They consistently sowed strife, discord, and confusion at the LATH meetings. They disrupt, they disrupted discussions and postings and objected to projects. For example, the beautification project, Clash for Trash, initiated in 2019 by the initial recommendation of Kevin Wasick, perpetuated by Kenny Parley, myself, and Dan Debonus. These two vehemently opposed this project being discussed in LATH, and we received a lot of community engagement because of this initiative. Instead of covering the LATH agenda we met beforehand, and the community members left the meeting during the LATH meeting because of their involvement. Most recently, Mr. McKelvey came to this chair position and touted how much he has got done as chair, because it wasn't done before. But it was no surprise to me, because he had nobody to sabotage his postings, or he didn't have to play email tag with the records keeper, who obtusely ignored comp communication to make me look inept. They now are in support of these projects because they have control, and it makes them look good or favorable to the community. There were somewhat good times in 2021, when they were not reappointed to the council. They would attend and rabble-rous, but it finally started to get to a point of progress of finalizing the bylaws. I was truly disappointed to find out that the very bylaws had diligently worked on while appeasing the recommendations throughout their condescending interruptions and tirades to only have them be thrown to the side. In the first meeting, as Mr. McKelvey passed a draft that he obviously, with John, John's help, had brought forth, it is no surprise LATH is where it is now. Commonly, this is something I don't like putting my energy into, but people like this count on our kind hearts in this manner. I'm willing to bet that Kurt probably spoke out of turn, interrupted you, demanded more time, treated staff and people with opposing views horribly during this agenda item, and if he did not, somebody must have put some effort into polishing him up. But trust me, it will come again. I don't mean to be disrespectful to them in any way, but I am linked in with the greater community of Lucerne, and I can guarantee that these few people do not speak for all of Lucerne. It is unfortunate that when people hear the word "LATH," they identify with Mr. McKelvey and John Jensen, Lake County News, and Lara. The town hall is there for everyone in the area to address issues with the collective voices of Lucerne. Not just a few have created an echo chamber to push forward personal agendas. To be exact, agendas like the castle, the harbor, the protagonist to save Lucerne from the various shenanigans they created while capturing it on newspaper print to enrage the community. Yes, those, this personal agenda. So please change LATH to "SIR," so Lucerne can move on and heal from this bad relationship. Sincerely, Mahilani Kane Urkiza."
Supervisor Sabatier?
Trying to be constructive here. I'd like to look at how we onboard for committees. I don't know that a lot of people who are getting on these committees understand that there are bylaws or things like that. If there's a way to kind of hand over a packet, and maybe a way, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out a way that doesn't create more work for our staff, but when we do say, hey, well, you're appointed and you only have two months left, it would be nice to know, rather than believing that you have this longer term. How can we make that be more transparent so that there's less confusion, there's less misunderstanding? Just kind of curious if that's something that we can bring back to ensure that, because we want to make it as simple as possible for people to not only fill out their application, which I love the fact that we have the electronic form. It makes it really easier for everyone. But also, how do we onboard to ensure that they're prepared to take on their role, and to understand their role, and to kind of get an understanding of what's their timeline? Because if you don't have that separate conversation on the side, if you don't remember to have that conversation, it can lead to confusion. So I, I, I'm not offering anything today as far as a suggestion, but I think that needs to be a conversation to figure out, just like we figured out how to do better on our website, to put more of our committees and more of the information, to make it a little bit more transparent. Just heard from Betsy Khan. I know she was definitely a fan of us moving towards that. But I think that we still have some steps that can be taken to make it easier for those that are joining to participate, to be prepared and understand how to.
So Johanna, do we have a, do we send a follow-up email once a board appointment is made? Because that would be a good time to send just confirmation on the term, or if it's picking up someone else's term that they're finishing, and maybe a package of information like Brown Act and different tools, so that that can happen as soon as they're appointed?
Right, and that's, you know, I forgot to say this when Mrs. Lim was up there, is I, I do think we need to do a better job of, like you said, onboarding and giving them an opportunity to understand their role, or give them an opportunity to understand the full concept of everything. There was at times where we put together, it was Brown Act training, and so, but that, that stopped for some time. But we, I think we should reinvigorate that. We had a contractor come forward and conduct the work, and then Anita would come to the town halls and do it as well, so.
Yeah, and she's been coming to town halls at the request of supervisors for the last couple of years, and she was just at the Cockberry Council a couple of months ago, or in February, rather. There, you know, and then the, the very first action of a MAC, when they're first established, is to develop their, their bylaws and their, their scope of what they intend to do. And I think that- intend to do. And I think that's going to be obviously important with this one, and it's probably important to revisit that, too, when the board members turn over and new ones are participating, just so that everyone stays on the same page. Supervisor Green?
I'm just going to repeat the issue. This came as a very simple agenda item. The discussion has ranged well off that subject matter, and maybe it was inevitable that it happened. I kind of feel like this agenda item got hijacked to a little bit. And if we're going to have broader discussions about MACs, or if we're going to have broader discussions about LATH in particular, I'm all for it, if we need to do it. But that's not what was presented on the agenda day. It was just a simple, hey, what do you think about this idea? I think you have plenty of consensus from the board. Sounds pretty good. Sounds like there's procedural questions and all that. But we weren't here to talk about the broader history of this particular MAC. So open to bringing it back for more substantive discussions at some appropriate date in the future, but I'm just going to repeat the idea. Today is not that, and I think out of an abundance of caution on our Brown Act compliance, we should probably move on.
Well, I disagree, because we do have the words "transition." So, you know, I think it makes sense to talk about how we got here. That's why I've allowed the conversation, and it looks like we have some more public input, so I will go ahead and open that back up. We have a couple of people in the chambers here, and we have some hands on Zoom. And I think we just give this item the time that it needs. So go ahead.
So you stated earlier that Melanie and I took over other positions that were ending at the end of the year. We're supposed to have two-year staggered terms, so there's supposed to be three appointed for two-year term, and then the next year, two appointed for a two-year term, and that way, we always have at least some continuity. So that's the way it's supposed to go. Our district supervisor was informed of that in November, when it was noticed that appointments or openings were going to be happening for the LATH. So if Melanie and I were the two terms that were ending at the end of 2022, which ones weren't, because all of our terms ended at the end of 2022?
We covered this January 10th.
No, no, you talked around it.
So this is something a little bit outside, and maybe if you want to have the conversation with Johanna and Supervisor Crandall following this item, that would be good, because...
We did cover this January 10th, Madam Chair. I'm confused at why he's bringing it up.
Oh, that's right. We covered it here.
So what I was told the last time I spoke with you, and I asked also as to why there weren't any more applications, I was told that I would find out when the rest of the public finds out.
You're finding out.
I still haven't found out. I mean, I hear you're trying to put this project through, but that still doesn't tell any of the public when you're...
It's not a project. It's a proposal.
Okay, that's semantics. You knew what I meant. The question is, please stop interrupting me. I'm...
Excuse me. This is your third time speaking, and we're taking up a lot of board time here, so could you get to your point?
This is a matter of great importance to me and my community, ma'am.
Yep, can you please?
With respect, I'd like to continue.
Respectfully, please.
Okay, so considering that, I know that it's your intention to appoint after this happens. It's, this is just mind-boggling, because this is...
This is an advisory committee. I'm...
Right, right, right. So what's the harm in appointing people to help advise? I mean, I just don't understand what...
What's happening, Kurt? This is what you want. You wanted inclusivity. You wanted more engagement. That's what we're looking at here.
Right, right. I have no issue with that. The issue is why there's no appointments up to this point. It's...
There will be. And we've covered a lot of your comments.
And there have been a great number of issues that the community of Lasern would like to have given official advice on in these last few months, and they've been unable to do that because of your decision. And also, the concurrency within the board in that decision.
The feedback that I've received is nothing's changed on your agendas for the community meetings. The initial, you know, irate situation still hasn't even come to fruition. I'm confused at why there's any type of...
There's three minutes on this public input. Thank you. We've got more people that want
Olga Martin Steele, and with all due respect to Supervisor Green, I just want to make an observation. I've attended all of the North Shore Town Halls, and one thing that I have observed is that they're all volunteer jobs, right? And it's tough for those of us that volunteer in a lot of different areas to take on one more volunteer assignment. And it occurs to me, and I'm not sure I've had this conversation with my supervisor, but it occurs to me that some level of support for the town halls, that for example, for agenda setting, excuse me, getting the agendas out, for record-keeping, just sort of the administrative details associated with running these town halls, I think they're very important. I think they could have a lot more value, maybe, than we, you know, perceive them to at this time, in terms of bringing input through the supervisor to the rest of the, to all of you. So I just want to put out there that I know there isn't a lot of money, but if there were a way to look into the possibility of maybe hiring someone...
Can you bring this specifically back to the LATH and the SIR?
So as to LATH, my observations are that there appears to be some conflict about who does what. I heard that in some of the input, in terms of who keeps the records, and there's some special interest stuff that I hear in there. And I just think if it was someone that either, you know, was reporting to the whole board or to the particular supervisor, it could be very helpful to get the word out to people that needs to get out to people, including the onboarding activities that you've talked about. And it seems to me that there are probably consultants that could be hired to maybe facilitate that. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Okay, anyone who hasn't gone before. Let's go to the Zoom room. We have Betsy Khan, and this will be the last public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Betsy Khan. I would like to suggest that the board consider, the board and the administration, consider adopting a policy for the formation and operation of municipal advisory councils specifically. There is one that the County of Mendocino Board of Supervisors has approved, and it defines the scope of activity and the functions of all of their municipal advisory councils. They're based upon statutory law at the state level, and they have the responsibilities that are often fraught with difficulty, because there's a lot of emotional content. But it's really a mutual agreement between the community and the supervisors as to how those are developed. That policy would be extremely helpful. I also heard earlier some references to things like the code of conduct and the use of the term advisory committees. You have some policies in your Board of Supervisors policies and procedures manual that affect every committee, and I would encourage you to consider Olga Steele's comments about providing some staff support. It wouldn't take much, but someone to be kind of the mother of this, a den mother for all of your committees, so that you have somebody making sure that your members are, you know, appointed correctly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Betsy. Okay, I'm closing public input. Is there any final comments from the board before we move on? This is a presentation item.
Thank you for hearing the presentation. We will come back to it at a later date. The email that was read was not my words. It was the previous chair's words, so I'm just stating that.
Okay. Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, I'm just going to reiterate the conversation I had before about maybe one solid board, and might help down the road with, you know, representation from all communities, and a little tougher, you know, if there's any internal conflict or anything, to be kind of by, you know, a couple of appointees from each chair. So I just put it out there. I will also say, and we had all conversation about advisory boards, but I do work with the Lower Lake Action Committee Group, which is very active, very positive in their communities. And that's not an advisory committee board that this board appoints. And when you say advisory board to the Board of Supervisors, we do appoint that board here at this board, no matter how it's written by the bylaws or whatever. That's, you know, it comes back to this board for appointment. But I just also talked about the Lower Lake Action Committee Group. They do some great work in the community, and are a great voice for the community without being an advisory committee.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll close this out and go on to item 7.2, Consideration of a Letter Documenting Written Comments in Response to CAL FIRE State Responsibility Area (SRA) Fire Hazard Severity Zones (FHSZ) Maps. And this is from our admin office.
Good morning, board members. I'm Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer. It's my privilege to present this item. You will recall Representatives from CAL FIRE presented draft State Responsibility Area Fire Hazard Severity Zones (MAPS) during a public hearing held concurrently with your board's meeting on Tuesday, January 24, 2023. During that meeting, we were advised public comment would be received, and your board voiced its support of preparing a letter to document Lake County's concerns. Multiple members of the public expressed concerns that failure to show potential effects of mitigation efforts alongside depictions of the worst-case wildfire events may have the unintended effect of demotivating those engaged in mitigation work. The 50-year time horizon is contributory to that, as discussed in the draft letter presented to your board. Additionally, concern was shared that fire insurance rates, which can already be prohibitive for many in some areas of Lake County, will not be positively affected by the maps as presented. And staff in your board understand that insurance companies use alternative models to evaluate risk, but comments shared during the public hearing in January suggest that this still bears mentioning. Written comments are due April 4, and as you'll see, our Chief Climate Resiliency Officer, Terry Logston, is here to answer any questions. This concludes administration's introductory comments, and we'll look forward to your input.
Anything to add?
The only thing that I would add is I had the opportunity to attend the monthly Fire Chiefs Meeting last week, and they discussed the insurance companies and the MAPS to a small degree. And one of the things that I can't recall which fire chief said it, but it really struck me, is that it is illegal in the state of California for the insurance companies to look at these MAPS. It's not that they don't, but they're not supposed to take it into consideration. What they're supposed to take into consideration is the CWPP, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So I thought that was of interest. But the MAPS, I think that your letter is good. Having all of the information in one location, I think, is helpful, meaning the different layers on the GIS of all the amazing work that we have going on in Lake County with the Firewise Communities, the Three Fire Safe Councils. It would be, if you're going to look at the map, you might as well be able to see other layers where we're taking really decisive action.
There's just one line in the letter that I just have a hard time with, and that is that in the second paragraph, and it says, "From 2011 to 2021, 2/3 of our county's landmass in Lake County was consumed by wildfire." And where it says greatly reducing the potential for large fires, I don't think that we're seeing a reduction. We're seeing a difference in the ecological response and recovery from fires, so maybe greatly changing the potential. But I don't feel like we have any reduced risk, because within two to three years, we have all this chaparral, and we have all these things growing up. And now, I mean, everywhere in the burned scar of the Valley Fire is fire-ready now. So I just, that was the only thing that kind of struck me. But I don't know what everyone else feels about that. Go ahead.
So for transparency purposes, I tried tackling creating this letter. Nothing even remotely close to what's in front of you. Really appreciate the work of admin staff to shine up my lump of coal that I provided them. But the idea is, if you look at some of the fires that we had, I think LNU was one of the perfect examples, where we can see it kind of smoldering in areas where the Valley Fire was still, it burned still, but not in the same way, and you can see it going around the shape of the previous fire scar. So maybe the timeline from 2011 to now might be so long that that timeframe is incorrect to say that statement. But I do believe that if it's a recent fire within the last five years, typically, you will start seeing some of like puzzle pieces coming together when you look at one fire and the next fire alongside of that. Now, again, that's just based on my limited personal experience of reviewing some of these things and looking at the fires. No, I'm not going to say there's science behind that, other than just looking at maps and seeing how it fits, kind of like looking at how South America fits right with Africa. So it's just, it does have an impact, but it's definitely a limited impact. I will agree with that.
Well, I would just, if we could just say it changes the potential for large fires, and then we're not. I think putting, reducing is more than what we can expect, I think. Supervisor Green?
Thank you. I'm going to propose a small edit as well. On page two, in the third paragraph, near the end of the second sentence, it says, quote, "very high-risk category." I think the accurate term would be hazard category. And to be clear, although it was not an easy concept for me to absorb at first go-round, by the second time we went around it, CAL FIRE did attempt, and I think successfully, make the point that these maps assess fire hazard, not fire risk, and the two terms are not to be used interchangeably. This is very similar to a planning document that might identify on maps where a 100-year floodplain is. This is a different thing. It's a fire, but as stated when CAL FIRE was here presenting the maps, the idea that virtually all of the county now is going to be mapped into the very high, the highest of the high hazard category is appropriate, totally appropriate. And although we attempt to parse their methodology, and we want to get credit somehow for mitigation efforts, again, our mitigation efforts are our efforts, and those are addressed at reducing fire risk in specific communities, in specific subdivisions. So rather than tell CAL FIRE through this letter that they should add some layers to discuss things that they haven't been chartered with creating, it is hard enough to map an entire state in terms of its potential for fire hazard over a long period of time. We're asking them to add layers on a much shorter time scale. Oh, we burned half the county in the last 10 years, so we should get credit for fuel reduction. Or we have Firewise Communities, and we should get credit for the work that's getting on there. We could map those things if we had staff and time to do it. We could lobby our legislator to tell the insurance companies not to use these fire maps. We could do any number of things that absorbs the information being presented by CAL FIRE here, and does encourage continued support of resiliency programs. But this letter says CAL FIRE, to some extent, got it wrong, and we want to see layers that will give this kind of micro view of things, when the whole goal of the fire hazard map is to give the macro view. So it's on us, you know, with these new maps. Do we need to take a fresh look at the safety plan and our general plan? new maps. Do we need to take a fresh look at the safety plan and our general plan? Well, luckily, we're already gonna be doing that. Do we have to update certain conclusions in our Community Wildfire Prevention Plan? I probably didn't term that right. Absolutely. When we update our area plans, as Director Turner was talking about, are we gonna be taking a look at these fire hazard maps and saying, what are we gonna do with that? Yes, absolutely. So it's a planning tool, but we can't turn it around and force on CAL FIRE the responsibility to go micro and granular with what we do with this data. Their job, and it was hard enough as it was, was to identify what parts of the county are very high, very high hazard. And they've done that. And I don't see anything particularly useful in this letter attempting to get CAL FIRE to do it. One, they're not gonna do it, you know, they're not gonna take our suggestions. And two, even if they wanted to, I don't think they would have funding, a legislative mandate, or any clear idea how to add some of the layers we're asking for. So I'll just leave it at that right now.
Well, I disagree, and we do work on all those planning documents. But the methodology here with the 30- to 50-year horizon is what is problematic, because that isn't taking into account recent burn scars and fuel management work. And if this is going to be used as a tool by the state, then it should be accurate, and it should have, and it should be focused in a micro way on our community. Supervisor Sabatier?
Couldn't disagree with you more, Supervisor Green. The methodology is ridiculous. They're imagining a world where human beings don't exist anymore. 50 years of vegetation growth, you to have a jungle everywhere is what they're looking at. Hence why it's all very high hazard. By looking at a 10-year, when the maps are redone every five years, which is their time period that they're looking at updating these maps, then you get a better understanding of where we are today and what could happen 10 years from now if nothing was done. 50 years is just an extreme situation when they're updating the maps every five years. Don't act like 50 years are gonna happen with nothing, no activity, no nothing. There is nothing in here that's asking CAL FIRE to update. We're looking at all of our local units. They all have this information. It's asking our local units to provide, have the ability to provide an extra layer. We are not asking the state to make that happen for us. In searching for what are some solutions, I spoke to many stakeholders, I will not name names, just in case that that's a problem. But those things are an easy way to implement locally through our fire units that are not asking for a whole lot. They already have all that information. We need to motivate and incentivize continued defensible space and work, not demoralize and de-incentivize, tripping over my own tongue here, the work that's being done. If you are a homeowner that is spending X amount of dollars to ensure you're providing defensible space, and now you have this map with, whether we believe it or not, insurance companies are gonna be using these maps, and there's gonna be no proof, show me your web history or your web browser history that you looked at the map. There's no proof that can be said that they used it or not. But then you see your insurance go through the roof, even though this is what you spend each year, and this map's not helping us. That is demoralizing. Why should I be spending the money to help save my area only to be burdened by things I can't even afford? Nobody's gonna be able to live here. We have to be able to fight this, whether we believe we can fight it or not. We have to attempt to fight it in a way that continues to defend, puts a, you know, a defensible space for our communities and makes it a reasonable map for us to utilize. What they're offering is not a reasonable map at all. And my second point is, I spoke with Ed Robey, and he brought up a good point. We should be sending a letter also to Insurance Commissioner Lara to ensure that we let them be aware of our concern that these maps will be utilized, no matter what they say. Some sort of communication with our Insurance Commissioner, because ignoring that part, when that's part of our fears, is also not engaging with the appropriate branch of government at the state level. And looking to see if there's consensus that we do the same as well.
I completely agree with sending this to our Insurance Commissioner. And yes, there is some stuff in here, and we talk about mitigation that is all local, but I think we need to do that. All of our advisory committees, which I think CAL FIRE went and presented this to, a lot of our constituents are waiting for us to have this discussion today as a board, and then they're gonna be filling out theirs, kind of in coincidence with the Board of Supervisors today. And I think pushing back on this is, it's mandatory. We have to do this. Whether or not we can win, just as you said, Supervisor, that it gets reconsidered, we need to do this. This is the right thing to do. It is a challenge. It is a big lift. But I look at, you know, obviously, the 10-year period instead of the 50-year or 100-year period, to being analyzed and looking at those solutions. But this is, I think, just the beginning. I'm glad that we're taking this on today, because it is due the 3rd, correct, April 3? And like I said, I know that there are many community members from the Middletown Area Town Hall, if they have not heard, written them their personal letters. They will be doing that after the board approves this today. So I know it's not a silver bullet or moving in the right direction, but we need to give that voice to our, both from the board and also to our constituents as we try and push this together to get it reevaluated. Yeah, does it need to be done? Yep, it does. But we need to look at the way we're doing it, and the way CAL FIRE is doing it, just ask for that review. So I'm in complete support of it. I support what the language change in the second paragraph there that you had and continue to push with this item. So I encourage as many folks to go to the CAL FIRE website to get that out, if you're a homeowner here in Lake County or even a renter, to make sure that you fill those out, because every county in the state of California is gonna be affected, and we will not be the only board responding.
No, no. Well, and we've seen legislation pop up throughout the state about development in high-fire severity areas. And we also can't have our future development hindered by these maps. Supervisor Green?
We should be informed when future development comes up. Gwinoc's gonna come back soon enough. When I was still on the City Council in Lakeport, Parkside came up, because, oh, we have a very high-hazard area here 100 yards away from this, but it's in a local responsibility area, so anything goes. As it turns out, CAL FIRE is gonna be bringing in some additional maps for local responsibility areas now. You're not gonna like those either, and neither are the cities, but it is what it is. We should not be demoralized with these maps that say we live in very high-fire hazard areas. We have all lived through that. We have seen it with our own eyes. These fires are mega-fires. They move with the rapidity that our past land use patterns, our past development patterns, which were probably not cited properly, given the fire hazards back then, but would be totally insane to think about building now. I get the idea that it will create challenges, but these challenges are pre-existing. It's not caused by CAL FIRE. It's not caused by this map. It's caused by our new understanding that climate change has made Lake County a more hazardous place for all of us. And instead of demoralizing us, or saying that this map is somehow going to disincentivize, is the word, it should do the opposite. It should make people double down. You know, we're not gonna tell people, if we're being honest with them, that mitigation efforts are going to make necessarily wholesale changes in our resiliency and stuff like that. People should be supporting that to, number one, save their own lives and hopefully save lives of their neighbors, and two, hopefully mitigate some property damage when these fires do come through. But, you know, this is, again, you take issue with their methodology, you don't. You're taking issue with the results, what you think is gonna happen with that. And you're saying this is gonna happen with insurance, or this is gonna disincentivize fire prevention activities. And it's like, no, this is how we, number one, put ourselves at the front of the line for future rounds of funding for mitigation, and two, that we continue to highlight with those public outreach programs to our community. It's like, look, whether you've lived here 50 years or you're just moving to Lake County, you need to know this whole county is a very high-hazard area. So when you get some public outreach from a Firewise Community or some mitigation grant planning, please take advantage of it. It's more than a strong suggestion. It could very much be a life-saving matter. But to turn around and say, CAL FIRE, you got this wrong, and you need to shorten your time window and do that. Again, you want to bring back something where RCRC or CSAC brings a bill that would do that, I'm all in. You wanna send this letter straight to the Insurance Commissioner and leave CAL FIRE out of it, I'm all in. But we're taking the battle to the one agency that is trying its very best to give us good science and good information that will inform all of our decisions moving forward.
I think we can be critical of this product without being critical of CAL FIRE. We all understand the reality that we live in, but we don't have to accept this mapping and this methodology. Supervisor Sabatier?
And we offer a solution. We're not just griping about what's going on. We offer a solution. Have you looked at the map? Red Hills is high severity. It's got grapes. How is that high severity? The map methodology, again, believes that everything stops and growth occurs for 50 years without any human activity. That makes no sense. These vineyards are here to stay for a long time. They are a green belt to actually protect communities when you have ag in between communities and where the fires are. We've seen that. I've seen that around my in-laws' place, where it just went in like 90-degree angles as to what was burning, rather than what, in comparison to where the ag area was. So, and that was from the Valley Fire coming towards Lower Lake, towards Highway 29. So the map is completely inaccurate based on our current standings. We're not saying ignore the map. We're saying do a 10-year increment rather than a 50-year increment, because we do want to know what potential hazards are, so that we can help focus where attention needs to be for mitigations. But to ask for a 50-year map, and everything is a focus for mitigation, that makes zero sense. And again, potential hardship on us in creating a viable opportunity for the future. SB 50 from two years ago was trying to pass a law that no development in high severity areas, meaning no more development in 93% of Lake County, to support that ideology is to not support the county. We're trying to offer a medium from you do nothing to what they're trying to do. We're offering a solution, saying, this is not healthy, what you're proposing for us. We understand the dangers or the hazards, and we're doing everything we can about it, but don't hurt us with this ridiculous methodology that they're currently using.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I just, I was glad that you said that about solutions, because a couple weeks back, when I went to Sacramento, that was one of the comments, was what are you, how are you preparing? What are you doing? And letters like this, initiatives like this, give us a chance to say, this is what we're doing. We have solutions. We just need help, you know. So I just wanted to highlight that. I don't know if it helps, but.
Okay, do we have anybody from the public? Anyone in the chambers? We have one hand up, Betsy Con.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for allowing me to comment on this. It's unfortunate that this item is before the board today since the deadline for submitting comments to the State Hazard Mitigation Plan. It was closed on the 24th of March. It would have been helpful to use this to add to those comments. However, I just want to point out that in the last couple of years, the Office of the State Fire Marshal and other agencies at the state level have created opportunities and ways to address long-term recovery and pre-fire planning. It just, it seems to me that this particular map and this particular approach, as Supervisor Sabatier was talking about, is not adequate to the task. It needs to be integrated with the other efforts, such as the new Department of Community Assistance at the Office of the State Fire Marshal, and all of their efforts to identify risks and hazards and how to make this work. I think it's really an important dialogue to have, in spite of the credibility of Supervisor Green's comments. We need to contribute to a shared evolution, and that evolution is happening quite rapidly at the Office of the State Fire Marshal. Very soon, as again, CDD Director Turner mentioned or explained, we're gonna be updating our safety element of the general plan. The new rules for doing so include a review of all existing subdivisions, especially for the focus on evacuation routes where there's only one way in and one way out. These are all tools that need to be harmoniously put together, and this particular map is not quite good enough to help us succeed at doing what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Okay, I don't see any other public input. I will bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I just have a quick question for Supervisor Simon. I know that you're on a state fire board, or I may not have that title correct. Is this something that can be brought through that avenue as well, or just kind of curious as to?
Yeah, you know, now I think, it should go to the State Board of Fire Services, yeah. I agree, we should pin this letter also to them, too, you know, as we do these letters as they're going out. So we got one, the Governor's Office. All right, we sent it to the Governor's Office, too. Did anyone mention that, or no?
I think that's a good part of the conversation, to make sure we're sharing it with the appropriate folks. I believe we're sending it through the comment line for CAL FIRE right now. But I think the Governor's Office is definitely the State Fire Board, our Commissioner, Insurance Commissioner, and obviously our representatives as well.
Excellent.
Okay, so.
OES, I don't know. They're typically after the fact, not before the, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay, so it's going to go to Chief Tyler, the Governor, the Insurance Commissioner, and our state electeds?
And the Fire Board.
And the Fire Board. So six CCs? Do we have consensus on this?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we need to take action on the letter.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the letter in response to CAL FIRE's Fire Hazard Severity Zone maps and authorize the chair to sign with the amended, with the amendment and sending it to all those as discussed just now.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Thank you, staff, for putting this letter together.
Thank you.
Great job. Okay, we have, that was 7.2. 7.3, "Consideration of Consistency of the Scope of the Lake County Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee With Needs to Support the Population of the Chi Clear Lake Hitch and Possible Direction to Staff." This is from our ag commissioner and admin office.
Morning, Board. Catherine Vanderwal, Agricultural Commissioner. So last week, your board requested some clarifications regarding the purpose and scope of the Lake County Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee. So the purpose and responsibilities of the committee can be found in the resolution that was adopted by your board last week on page three, under powers and functions, as is listed. So these items include various items, but notably item number three, which is to consider specific items referred to the committee by the Board of Supervisors for recommendation, study, or report, and item five, to hold public meetings, workshops, or presentations on topics of local, state, or federal significance relative to fish and wildlife conservation, recreation, and protection. So in addition, another topic of clarification was to determine if this committee, the Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee, is the appropriate body to address elements of the county's response to the declining Clear Lake Hitch population. And I believe Terry has information on the different committees right now that are or could potentially be addressing this topic.
Yes, thank you. During your board's discussion in, I believe it was in January, I put During your board's discussion in, I believe it was in January, I put together a chart of all of the committees that could. It's not that they necessarily do, but they could, you know, because it could be under their purview. And so there's the Blue Ribbon Committee for the Rehabilitation of Clear Lake, which is under the California Department of Natural Resources. They have three technical, two active technical subcommittees that are not governed by CNRA. And then there's county-appointed positions, the tribes, Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board, and UC Davis. The county, the Lake County Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee, I adjusted this chart to add the two tribal government representatives. Then the Lake County Agricultural Committee, Advisory Committee, that has two county supervisors. You know, obviously, that's been pretty specific to agriculture, not necessarily to wildlife. Then there's the Clear Lake Hitch Conservation Strategy, which your board has heard about, that's headed up by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, that's been going on for years, and it has county participation. It is definitely discussing the Clear Lake Hitch. That's what it is for. Then there's the Clear Lake Hitch Task Force that was convened this fall, I believe, by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, which I have been participating on, as well as the Lake County Watershed Protection District. And then the GSPAC, the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee. That one, I mean, it has to do with water in the Big Valley, but it's not the entire watershed. And it is very specific and has regulations, state-governed regulations. So with that particular one, I don't think it's at all appropriate. And those are the committees that could work locally.
Any comment? Supervisor Sabatier?
While I think that it's definitely a topic that should not necessarily be outside of the scope of Fish and Wildlife Committee, it seems to me that there's already some larger task force that is attempting to review what is going on, what are the solutions? And I think that duplication of efforts should not be what we ask for. I think that we need to make sure to focus on an area or a committee that is looking to make those happen. So I'm in favor of either the Clear Lake Hitch Conservation Strategy or the Clear Lake Hitch Task Force. I'm not quite certain what exactly the difference is, other than the federal being more involved with the Clear Lake Hitch Conservation Strategy. I kind of wish those two would kind of blend together, I guess, rather than having two separate conversations. I don't know how much they parallel or complement one another, but I think that if there are, let's say, small grants or small projects that come out of those conversations and it goes to the Fish and Wildlife, because they do have some funds available, to be able to say, yes, we want to support that kind of project, I think that would be appropriate. But to ask our county committee to hire a fish biologist or some sort of scientific capability to really provide guidance and solutions versus working with those that already have access to those experts, I think is just not an efficient way of using our time and our dollars. And that's my.
Well, I think this is, this is the one venue where the public and community can participate, and I think that it would be a great place as an education forum to workshop some of the ideas that might come out of the other groups. And also look at maybe small localized projects, like encouraging stream cleanup, those kinds of things that, that would, that are kind of directly in the community, and try and get some of that work kind of happening locally and maybe quickly. So those were the thoughts that I had. I don't want to, you know, this is an advisory council that meets every other month, so obviously they're not going to have a heavy workload or ask them to create policy or anything like that, but this is a good place to, to have forum, education, and workshops.
Supervisor Green.
Yeah, I wouldn't even limit it. She has the very amazing map. So a couple of things. To the point that the GSPAC would have no role, I think they're going to end up hearing some of this by default. You know, should they be the primary focus? Probably not. But I only pointed that out because it's there, it's existing, it's a useful process. So I do think they, they can and will have some ability to input, provide input on projects occurring in Big Valley at least, at some appropriate time. I like the idea of the Fish and Wildlife Committee meeting more frequently and paying attention to these issues more frequently because, again, the map points out, it's really hard to follow the bouncing ball, even when we talk about something as simple, a proper name, a Doby Creek Conjunctive Use Project. Well, we're pitching that to three different projects at this point. One, it's been rebranded as Big Valley Fish Habitat. One, we just heard earlier today. And so I think having a dedicated committee that can help this board pay attention to those issues and elevate them to the board at some appropriate time when we do need to do that, I think that's responsive to Chair Pisca's concerns that we do need to stay front and center on this. Yes, we do have seats on those state and federal task forces, but those things exist in their world. Maybe there's Bagley Keen, open meetings, maybe there aren't, depending where it's at. We have a committee, we have a Brown Act openness, we have local community members giving input, and, and they can help, they can, they can be our local eyes and ears and really help this board navigate it, even in just the, what, six weeks since we did the emergency proxy. So many different things have happened, and it's really hard to keep track. And I like the idea of this committee doing that. In terms of staff support, my only question for Director VanderWaal is ag advisory, you already have a pretty big lift there, and I appreciate all the hard work you put on that. So this has been tasked with you right now. So if we do spin up a really nice-sized Fish and Wildlife Committee, and we're going to ask for some staff support for that, is that, is that within your current bandwidth to accommodate?
What, my question would be, what would that entail? Because the way the committee is set up, the committee is, the group itself needs to designate a chair, a vice chair, and then a secretary. So my staff is, of course, willing and helping, you know, assisting with getting the agenda ready, getting it out and getting it posted, as well as the approved minutes.
And six meetings a year.
Right.
Yeah. And ag advisory committee meeting, meets a minimum two times a year, but as needed. So I don't think either of them are a big lift. Any other comments from the board? Go ahead.
You know, I think that since the proclamation, obviously, we've got so much traction and really focus on it. And, you know, I'm kind of of the mind, too, not just sticking it in one advisory committee, you know, as the projects come up, or whether it's water resources, or it's one of the tribes looking for the support from one of the committees. You know, I really think that's the synergy that we need to just continue with, you know, and, because, hey, this is just going to be the focus on that, because there's so many things, obviously, that we see from the county level, but also the federal partners, which are the tribal partners that are working on this all the time. I think that collaboration, so, you know, I don't want to bog down one committee with it just making sure that we're engaged. And I think the changes that were made on the 21st, adding the two tribal representatives to the ag, or Fish and, I got confused now, the Fish and Wildlife Committee, puts us that voice and that, that missing conversation all the time on, okay, let's stay focused on, you know, the hitch or the chi, you know, as we move forward through this process, you know? And we saw that collaboration today with, you know, the Watershed Protection District bringing forward that. So those are my thoughts on it, from a holistic standpoint, to help with the hitch, so. Because we do have a lot of good work going on right now, and as long as we stay focused on it with that proclamation, I think we're going to move in the right direction.
And if the weather helps out, too?
The weather definitely helps, but, you know, the beginning planning processes, which we approved today, you know, there are some obstructions or other things, and I know we're looking at going at all in different directions, but whether the feds are looking at it or the state agencies, as we're bringing this together, they're looking for that collaboration. And the board made a big step of that, of doing the proclamation, and I think that's going to help drive us across the finish line where we need to go. That's what I truly believe, and I, and that's what they're looking for from the fed and the state level, so.
The local collaboration.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes. And then we have quite a bit of overlap with the people that have been appointed on this advisory committee, and I think this is really where we get that community engagement, and then get recommendations brought here to us. Okay. I'm not seeing anyone in the public. Is there anyone here in the chambers on this item? And I don't see any hands up in the Zoom room. So I will bring it back here. And the action here is directing staff.
I probably confused everything, but obviously, with the proclamation, you know, we just want to stay focused on, we have so many different agencies, and just making sure that all the ag advisory committees, the Fish and Wildlife, that we've got that one vision, and we're just working together. So for me, you know, I really think we have the ability to do that, obviously, whether it's in the communication of the meetings or the ag advisory, Fish and Wildlife Committee saying, hey, we got a project we're going to be supporting, we want to bring it to the board, and just making sure that we stay focused in that manner. And I think, like I said, some of the stuff we had today is bringing it, and I know you only meet every other month as we're moving through that process, but all the other committees and conversations that are going on, there's opportunities to call special meetings or bring board items, or approaching a supervisor and say, hey, we really got to look at this one, to make sure that we continue that positive moving forward. That's, you know, that's, that's where I'm at. I really see it as that proclamation was the, the final step. We were always right there, but that, that puts us in the point to, I think that's enough direction. There's an emergency, and we need to focus on it.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier?
So, don't want to add something to it, but just, I guess, a simple request. Obviously, need consensus before it happens, but maybe sharing the agenda for the Fish and Wildlife Advisory with our water resources, so that they make sure that they're aware of what discussions are happening there, so they can maybe provide the same comments back in reverse. I just think it's important to continue that, that meshing of our department to our own different task forces to ensure that we're well aware of what's going on as well, not just relying on the memberships to make those things happen.
Well, Angela is appointed.
Did we appoint Angela?
We did.
She is.
She's appointed. So we have county staff, we have tribal leadership, and then we have all of our other representatives. So we have great representation there. That's what I was, that's why we've got so much overlap there. So I think everybody that's, you know, there's a lot of technicals out there, and I think this is going to be that perfect community forum for reporting out and, and moving things forward. So we have consensus on that direction?
Yes.
Oh, Supervisor Green?
Yeah. And just to clarify, I think there'll be consensus that we wouldn't, we're going to staff up, we're going to get the appointments done, we're going to get the committee up and running and basically let them set their own agenda. Clearly, they're going to absorb a lot of chi-related issues moving forward, but there's other broader things that came up, too. I started sniffing around some of the game fishing regulations. Obviously, the biggest repository of fish is something we don't have direct jurisdiction over, and that's Clear Lake. And just for educational purposes, there is, there are special regulations applicable to Clear Lake, applying the game fish contests, and having some understanding of that, making sure that our, not just our local people are aware of that, but also people coming in, there's a place for public outreach and education through that as well. So just a suggestion, and when the new committee gets up and running, maybe helping the county, helping us follow what's happening at the state level, in particular with CDFW and California Fish and Game Commission. Yes, they're going full speed right now, but there've been, maybe one or two things happened that we were not aware of, and it would be helpful to have kind of an early warning system in place so that we are acutely aware of any pending state changes.
So that brings up another point. We have developed the cannabis task force to kind of do a lot of this work, too. So if an item comes from a supervisor, it comes to the board here, we decide as a board to send it to community development, who then sends it to the task force. So because we've got volunteers, and they meet so infrequently every other month, I think if there's something that a supervisor wants to bring to that advisory committee, that it come to the board first. And then we can agree with that.
Yeah.
And then send it there. How does that sound? Yes? Consensus on that, too? Okay. All right, well.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may make, just a point of clarification. The staff memo is requesting specific direction to the Agricultural Commission.
Yes.
As a possible additional direction, your board may want to consider just generally the second to the last paragraph of that memo, which, with regards to direction of staff, in this case, Agricultural Commission, to consult and assign hitch-focused work for recommendation, study, or report to the Lake County Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee in light of the discussion that has taken place today.
Okay, so do we agree that the language is sufficient?
Yes.
Okay. I agree. You, too?
You're talking about within the bylaws?
Within the bylaws.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially the, I forget what the section is called, the powers or?
Powers and functions.
Powers and functions is where it details, and it's broad enough to allow a diverse number of topics, so.
Okay. Did we complete everything?
Yes, thank you.
For this item? Thank you, Lloyd. Okay, so we are finished with this item, which, oh, shit, I lost my place.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Sorry, have to reopen my agenda. All right, so that was 7.3. We just have one more item in calendars. Do we want to do this before lunch, or do I want to? Susan?
You actually have, you still have a remaining pulled item.
Oh, right. Okay. So maybe we should just take lunch then now and come back at 1:15. Sound good?
Yeah.
All right, welcome back. We have an extra item to consider. CA Parker?
Yes, we have an extra item. Matthew will be coming forward to share why it should be considered. It's in relation to Congressman Thompson's ask for the earmarks that we previously brought before this board. There is a minor adjustment that we'd like to make the board aware of and to sign off on.
Okay. So first, the rationale.
Matthew?
Yes, good afternoon, board members. So first, the rationale. On Monday evening, March 27, which was yesterday, the county was notified by the city of Clear Lake of a request for additional items to support, a modified request that was derived from our broader community project funding request supported by your board, which was Resolution 202330 on March 14, 2023, and submitted thereafter by the city of Clear Lake. So Congressman Thompson's staff indicated that pools and aquatic centers are precluded from community project funding this cycle, and therefore, the proposal must be amended to include funding of the capital costs related to the regional recreational center at Burns Valley only. And we've, but we've been advised that additional materials must be submitted no later than Thursday, March 30, so that is prior to your board's next meeting.
Okay. Comments? Supervisor Sabatier?
I was going to make a motion to approve the item.
Well, let's do.
Sorry, jumping.
Public input? Oh, I need to join. Okay. I don't see any, so we'll bring the item back.
Madam Chair, I move to.
Go ahead.
It appears that there's going to be a motion to approve taking up this item as an extra item.
Yes.
Of course.
Yes. I move to approve this extra item as it was, it came up to our, it came to our attention after the posting of this current agenda. after the posting of this current agenda and needs action prior to the next posting of the regular meeting on Tuesday, April 4.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, well, let's just take the item up now, 4.1.
Thank you, board.
Excuse me, Johanna, could you display both the resolution and the staff memo behind Matthew?
It has to be one at a time.
Okay, first the memo, then the result.
So you'll recall on Tuesday, the 14th, your board approved submittal of four proposals for consideration of fiscal year 2024 community project funding. And those were the Lakeport Regional Navigation Center, which was a joint Lakeport and county submittal, the Recreation Center in Clear Lake, and Aquatic Community Swim Center in Lakeport, which was a joint proposal that had a countywide scope, Big Valley Fish Habitat Improvement and Groundwater Recharge Project, which was submitted by the Lake County Watershed Protection District, and Airborne Electromagnetic Survey of Lake County's Groundwater Basins, which was a project that was sourced within the Blue Ribbon Committee and supported by your board as well. So Congressman Thompson's staff is continuing to work with representatives from each of the subcommittees that are contemplating awards. And they're effectively advocating for Lake County to secure as much funding for as many projects as they possibly can. Unfortunately, while it's too, far too early to be certain of the outcome, Congressman Thompson's staff is optimistic that multiple Lake County projects will be funded again this year. So that part is really good news. Unfortunately, one of Congressman Thompson's staff relayed that, as previously stated, aquatic centers and community swim centers are not eligible for funding. And I wanted to also just affirm that there was a meeting hosted between city of Lakeport and city of Clear Lake staff to try to see if there were creative opportunities to still include something on the Lakeport side of the proposal. And it was unfortunately determined that we're too late in the process to do that. So on behalf of the, you know, the Joint Powers Agency, which encompasses the cities and also the county, this is a project that is consistent with the overall scope of that group to try to develop recreation centers as broadly in the county as possible. And so the Joint Powers Agency was supportive of modifying this proposal as allowable in order to try to get, you know, funding for whatever Lake County-focused projects we can. And so that's how we came to this place today. So you'll recall our initial submittal was not committee-specific. So unfortunately, they weren't able to find funding for the broader request. And, but we're really grateful that Congressman's staff did continue to work through this with us and provide this secondary opportunity. So while, again, while the county and cities had hoped that we could collectively make a more broadly distributed and county-wide impact with this funding request, it's still nonetheless a positive to have a regional recreation center of this quality in Lake County. So the resolution before your board today modifies the request for support from supporting the recreation center in Clear Lake at Burns Valley and a potential community swim aquatic center in Lakeport to just including at this time the recreational center at Burns Valley. And that's, again, accordance with the guidance of Congressman Thompson's office, that that's what's likely or more likely to have an opportunity to be funded this year. So we're just trying to position our request to have the best chance as possible.
Great, thank you, Matthew. Comments from the board? Supervisor Spatier?
I appreciate that we were able to push all of those projects. I know that some of those projects came late to us as well. We added one on the list the day of, that we were reviewing all these things. I don't think it takes away from anything that we were attempting to get. I think this is still working towards the greater good of the JPA. I do, and hopefully this is not a negative for me to say this, but I do think we weren't creative enough. I know I mentioned to you, Mr. Rothstein, that a empty swimming pool makes a great skate park. And so they could have looked a little harder, but it seems that the obvious is there. And so that's why we're not able to move forward with it. I hope we find another way to support the city of Lakeport and our JPA for that to happen because it is a regional draw, not just a specific location asset. So I think that moving forward is unfortunately what it needs to be. I wish we could do both, but it is what it is at this moment in time.
Supervisor Green?
Just a technical question. When we did the original CPF, the county was submitting it, right? Now we have a JPA. And if we put in this request as the board and, you know, get awarded it, it'd be awarded to the county or to the new JPA? You know, it's just a technical question. And who should be making the request? Should it be the board now that we have a JPA? We're doing an extra agenda item here. My question is, should we spinning up a special meeting of the new JPA to be doing this request?
Yeah, I can definitely appreciate that question. So the action that's before your board today is simply defining this as among Lake County's highest priorities for community project funding. So we did that with the previous items. And as it progresses through the process, it'll be clarified in terms of, you know, what specific agency will be providing the funding and what Lake County entity would be most, you know, appropriate to draw down the funding at that point in time. But we're really not to that point in the cycle yet. But I am aware that the JPA is, you know, already looking to be active and is, as was suggested, you know, already looking into other potential opportunities for funding. So, and I can definitely, you know, make sure that the members of the JPA, the representatives to the JPA are aware of, you know, your interest in clarifying that as soon as possible.
Any public comment? I don't have my Zoom open. Is anyone in Zoom, Johanna?
There are no hands in Zoom at this time.
I'll bring it back to the board for action then. What's the recommended action?
Recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
As an extra item.
Just offer the resolution, Greg.
I share?
Yes, I'd like to offer the resolution.
Thank you.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Spatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Which item, 7.5 or 5.9? Susan, do you have a preference? 7.5 or 5.9?
7.5.
7.5, okay. Consideration of Agreement Between the County of Lake and Redwood Community Services, Inc. for Supportive Employment and Supportive Education Program Services for Fiscal Years 2023 to 2026 for $408,220. I'm sorry, $282. Behavioral Health.
Good afternoon, board. Stephen Carter, interim Behavioral Health Director. So that is, the main idea here is that Behavioral Health wants to contract with RCS, Redwood Community Services for Early Psychosis Intervention Supported Employment and Education Programming. Our department did an RFP back in July with it being due in August of 2022. So it was quite a while ago. There were two respondents to the RFP. One was deemed ineligible due to a pre-meeting requirement. So like a bidder's meeting, you had to be there or you can't propose. Only one entity did, and so there is one proposal before us today, which is RCS. It took a long time for the agreement to come to fruition. County Council approved it on March, and it was not on county council. We had to work out some details with the state. And we're coming before you today to issue that and allow the chair to sign for that agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, well, these funds are all 100% funded through the Early Psychosis Intervention Plus grant. So there are no county funds involved.
Any comments? Supervisor Spatier?
I believe there's an amendment that needs to be made to this one. Am I correct on that?
Correct, I wasn't sure if I wanted to steer your thunder there.
All your thunder.
Yeah, not such good thunder. So on the attachment for the agreement, the title says that the services would be through fiscal year 2526. And the term ends June 30th to 25. Well, that's only 2425. So the term needs to be changed to June 30th, 2026 to allow it through actual fiscal year 2526.
That was my only comment.
Anyone else? Anyone in the chambers or in Zoom?
I haven't been given the rights to be.
I don't see anyone in Zoom. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Redwood Community Services, Inc. for Supportive Employment and Supportive Education Program Services for Fiscal Year 23 through 26 for $408,282 as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, board.
Okay, now we can go to item 5.9. Approve lease for commercial property located at 858 Lakeport Boulevard, Lakeport from February 1st, 2023 through February 28th, 2024, and authorize the chair to sign. Do we have Director Partey?
I have notified him.
Don't see him in attendance or panelists at this moment.
While we're waiting, I was going to have a question of Public Services, actually. I know that's JP's item, but the condition of that office even for another year. So I did have a question of Public Services. If we're waiting for JP, maybe we can loop Lars in, too.
Lars is on the road. You may wish to take up calendars and if you'd like, I could make a phone call, I'll step out.
Okay, we'll come back to this item, close it, and do calendars. Who is ready to start?
And I can make it happen.
Okay.
Trying to figure out what I'm looking at here. So I did want to mention, I'm looking now at my history of what I've done last week. There was an interesting meeting that I was at yesterday. It was something I had not seen before and that, never seen a presentation of something like this. And I know that in speaking with CAO Parker, she said she's seen it before, but maybe it's evolved it a little bit. And basically, it was at the Economic Mobility Leadership Network for NACO. The presentation was done by resultsforamerica.org. It was the number four. And what it does is it provides a kind of a menu of issues that counties and cities around the United States deal with. And within that menu, once you click on a specific type of issue, it offers you another menu of solutions. And within those solutions, there's, there's strong, there's, there's three different levels of solution results to let you know that this has been proven, this looks strong, or this has great potential. That way, we're not looking to invent the wheel, which a lot of times, we're never really reinventing the wheel. But sometimes we start with our own ideas, which kind of mimic what's already out there. But learning from others, understanding what they've done and what troubles they've had. It was definitely a nice-looking tool, a nice database of all kinds of things that you can use and bring in and figure out how to implement it. So again, if you go to results, the number foramerica.org, you can go ahead and find that catalog of all potential solutions to different things. I thought that was something that I'd want to bring back to the board and share with you guys. I'll just move forward and ahead. There's a lot of Blue Zones things happening tomorrow. We also have our ARPA committee that's meeting tomorrow early in the morning. Then there's a CSAC homeless webinar that's happening on the 30th that I signed up for. Meeting with an advisory group that was created to provide advisory suggestions for Woodland Community College over at our Lake County campus. Then continued with a meeting over at Lower Lake High School. I believe it's a Blue Zone event. Let me see, what else do I got? I had a good conversation with a group out from Texas. I'll be meeting on Friday, the 31st with both our chief, chief climate resiliency officer. I always forget the entire title of that, as well as CAO Parker, to kind of figure out what's the next step. Does it need to come to the board? Does it need to go directly to the committee that needs to be having those conversations with them? I'll be checking out again the Warming Shelter, just to report on that. I did go yesterday, or yesterday, last Friday. Obviously, you heard a lot of stuff about the Warming Center. The, we started that relationship on January 24th, I want to say, is when we signed the approval. And it was for 90 days. So there's nothing to say that it is being shut down, but at the same time, we're still waiting for more funds to appear from the state in order to figure out what we do next. So that was the reason for them being here. But overall, it seems that everything is going well. They're well-staffed, good vibe inside the area as well. And our paperwork as far as HMIS and other stuff has definitely been a whole lot better, too. I will also be spending my Saturday morning over at Lower Lake High School as they do the ribbon cutting for the new track that they put out there. And then the following week, I don't know what I have. I have a feeling it's a Middle Creek Project Committee. Also, I'll be preparing for our PEG Board meeting, meeting with our CAO, and coming back here on Tuesday.
Go.
I'll go. Last week, Thursday, went to the Blue Ribbon Committee. They proposed projects. Then there was a list of projects we reviewed. And I think at the next meeting, we'll address the concerns because there were some surveys that they took. Not surveys, but just, they gathered, they had like a doodle poll type of thing where you would say, I support it or I don't support it. And as you know, the Blue Ribbon Committee commonly recommends off of consensus. There's not usually a vote. So just basically trying to get the concerns addressed out. And then I'm pretty sure we'll come back with some more. At the next meeting, I know Supervisor Green, at the tail end, I kind of got stuck on something and you were able to elaborate on, I think it was the hitch resolution. Was that what it was about? I know that you jumped in and I was like, thank goodness, because I was, they asked us and I couldn't get on for some reason. But either way, came in and saved the day for me on that. Let's see, this week, I know I did something else, but I, this week, citizen engagement follow-up on Wednesday morning. I have a meeting with the sheriff in the afternoon. Thursday, Area Agency on Aging, and then the Lake County Recreation Agency meeting. I think that's our first one. The Middle Creek Restoration Project Committee on Monday. Friday's kind of open for me, so I'll probably, you know, touch base with some, a lot of calls that I have and emails and whatnot. And then back here for the board supervisors on Tuesday.
Yeah, I think I clarified, because again, it is hard to follow the bouncing ball. I think we were going over the LiDAR project, which was approved last year, but needed funding this year. And there was an ask for that. So I think what I posted was links to the two resos we had actually done.
That's what it was.
And it's hard, yeah. So Adobe Creek Conjunctive Use Project is popping up in various iterations in these various requests. So just tried the best I could to follow the bouncing ball for the committee. I don't know if I succeeded, so if there's any follow-up questions. Last night, we did have our first meeting of the reconstituted Scotch Valley Community Advisory Council. And I think it went pretty well. So thanks to our new council members, and we actually did have a fair number of other residents interested. And it was nice to see them engage. I think we're going to have a good group moving forward, so thankful for that. Next week, actually a request for this week, and I don't know what your bandwidth is, CAO Parker, but I'm hoping we can do our little agenda meet and greet on Friday. Monday will be my birthday, and I'm hoping to take the day off to do very non-board-related things. Next week, also, I have Children's Council popping up monthly. Next week also, I have Children's Council popping up monthly, but I don't know if they meet monthly. I see Continuum of Care on for the 6th. Is that right?
But we just do.
You're too far.
Yeah, we just do the one week until our next meeting.
Okay. And that's it.
Yesterday, you know, obviously had some family matters to deal with last week. But last night, had a meeting with Community Development Director on an issue down in Lower Lake and about 14 residents or property owners down the Lower Lake area in Morgan Valley. We'll be following up with her on that as we move through that process. Today here, have the board meeting. We'll finish up with that. Today, I do have on here Agenda Review. It's about time for me to start attending those. So hopefully, I'll be able to make that tomorrow. And then kind of an open calendar, besides Friday, we're back on for our Friday meeting with the Cao. And into this weekend, obviously, April Fool's Day on Saturday. We'll see it happens that day. But, you know, moving back into Monday, 3rd, and then back here on Tuesday. I am following up, too, with some other projects. Working with the Lower Lake Action Committee Group was the projects down there that hopefully I'll be bringing back to the board here real soon, working on that. So that'll be a good project in the Lower Lake area for the cemetery. And then also reach out to admin, because I do need to do a reappointment. And hopefully get it agendaized here soon enough for the Middletown Cemetery. Someone had resigned and is looking to be, someone else is looking to be reappointed. So that's what I have. Until next week.
So last week, we had our Tree Mortality Task Force meeting, which is monthly now. And we've got a visit from Mike Jones, our UC Extension Forester, who's also an entomologist. And we were finally able to kind of pick his brain, and he gave a presentation on what's going on with the bark beetles and tree mortality. And of course, we all appreciate the winter that we're having this year with the colder weather and lots of rain. It's potentially slowing the beetles, but they go dormant during the wintertime. This time last year and the year before, we were seeing active swarming. So we had a longer, drier, warmer period, which meant much more activity. So if anything, this year is just slowing things. He said it's too early to, to tell how the trajectory will be affected. But the high populations of beetles are still out there. And, you know, the trees will have more vigor and they'll possibly be able to fight off attack. But, but the populations are still really high. So he said this, this weather and these conditions will likely help flatten the curve, which is something we've heard before.
No, don't.
But we'll have to see when things, when spring happens, trees break dormancy. The last attacks were happening in October and November. They were seeing still a lot of beetle activity. So we will likely see some tree fade happen in the spring, just as we did last winter, February. We saw a lot of trees suddenly just fade out because they had been in dormancy and broke dormancy, and they'd been attacked and killed. So not out of the woods. Other pun for you.
There you go.
Yeah, so it's still, it's still gonna be a big issue. But we did have some seasonal effects that could have slowed things. Really important to manage the storm damage because trees that have fresh wounds or damage, particularly the conifers, will be susceptible to attack in those injured areas. And then the branches and debris that have fallen in trees is host material for different species of beetles. And so we want to make sure and do cleanup as quickly as we can before it's a fire issue, which will, it will be later on, a couple of months from now. It's going to be beetle habitat. So one of the things that he stressed was, although some debris is important for the environment and ecology, it's important to get that cleaned up. And as far as soil saturation, wind, snow events, and rain, we're still experiencing that. And so we'll, could likely still experience windfall trees and, you know, other issues from that. So Clerk did receive $9.8 million for their grant, which I think was USDA. Trying to remember who the grant was for. But 7.4 million of that does go to the Hogback Bridge to support their projects for the next couple of years. That was a capacity building grant with a lot of projects. So it's pretty awesome that we continue to have this synergy with all these meetings and groups and everyone together. And there are some other grants, two Fire Safe Council grants. I'm sorry, two grants that our local Lake County Fire Safe Council is going after, a COCO AIM grant and PG&E vegetation grant. And then the HMGP grant opportunities that are coming up, too. So I know our Chief Climate Resiliency Officer will be keeping us in the loop of everything that we need to do to be preparing for those from the county side. So it was really great to get all of that updates. We hadn't heard from Mike in a couple of months, and we were all wondering what the situation was with the bark beetles. So for my calendar, tomorrow, I have a Agenda Review. And then ARPA, I don't know if I'll go to the Blue Zone meetings later in the afternoon. It's possible I will. Thursday, there's a lot of overlapping things. California Wildfire and Forest Health, or Forest Resilience Task Force meeting is virtually from 1:00 to 4:00, but I've also got my NACO breakout session. And then we're also doing the Lake County Recreation Agency Board meeting. And then we're having dinner with Senator Maguire.
Is that confirmed? I know they suggested. I didn't see any other follow-up.
I didn't see the follow-up either, but I put on my calendar, so I didn't forget.
Me, too. I got it on there. I was just waiting.
We'll wait and see. We'll wait at the ready.
It's gonna make it like you guys have dinner every week with them.
Zoomed in to town, I know.
When it happens.
Got canceled at the last minute last time. Friday, Caesar Chavez Day. Have my NACO breakout group, then our staff tree meeting. And then Monday, Cao Parker, and then back on Tuesday, the 4th.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I forgot to announce something that's really cool, and I think some people will be happy about it. Commander Fanzler and one of his other, I think, are they deputies, too? Yeah, they were at one of the meetings, I want to say, a while back. And I think they heard a lot of discussion. In all of my town halls, they talked about the hawk crosswalks, you know, with lights. And so I got this email last week from Commander Fanzler. "We identified a problem with the vehicle, first pedestrians collisions and fatalities in Lake County, especially along State Route 20. And so we put together a safety proposal for better eliminated high-visibility crosswalks and lobbied Caltrans for over a year to consider our proposal. I was just informed that Caltrans approved $2.5 million to help improve 20 of the poorly marked crosswalks that we identified in our recommendation on State Route 20 in Lake County from Upper Lake to Clear Lake Oaks. I'm proud of my troops for putting this together with a focus on safety for pedestrians and motorists. He thinks this simple improvement, although more expensive than he realized, will have a positive significant impact in the future." So want to let us know. That's.
Great.
Good.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing.
CHP. Oh, it is Trooper. You're right.
Trooper. Okay, wonderful. Well, that concludes our open session. We will, doesn't it? Oh, wait, no, we have to go back to 5.9. Sorry about that. Okay, I'm gonna reopen 5.9. Approve the lease for commercial property located at 858 Lakeport Boulevard, Lakeport, from February 1st, 2023 through February 28th, 2024, and authorize the chair to sign. Health Services, and we have Director Portney.
Good morning, Board and Hello Community. Yes, it would be great to get approval for the 858 extension of the lease while we work with other county partners to put in our H-back system here at the Bevins facility to accommodate the staff members that we hope to place in that section of the building. So we're renting out this leasing space to be able to accommodate the construction. And then we will move forward with all working at Bevins.
Supervisor Swatia, you pulled this item?
Yeah, I, there's certain discomforts here. And I know that it's, the more I thought about it, the more I feel like it's more of a micromanaging type of perspective. But at the same time, I know that it's state grants that are paying for this. But it also does place certain burdens on us outside of that state grant. I'm sure that there's some sort of, I don't have the original agreement in front of me. I only have the amendment. But my guess is that we are in charge of the maintenance, of the general maintenance of the building. Not sure if everybody is being paid accordingly from that grant or if we're utilizing some of our own building maintenance folks to do some of the work. I know that there's a large amount of vacancy as well in the building that you're in currently. I understand that there is some construction. In looking a little deeper into that, it sounds like that's not necessarily, it's more of a timeframe of waiting rather than a timeframe of length of construction, since it seems like it was fairly minimal. But I also know that I have gotten some complaints from others, kind of not complaints, but I guess inquiries as to who's paying for some of these services. I know these are COVID-19-based services in the sense that at our senior center over in the city of Clear Lake, they're there once in a while. I don't know the exact schedule that they have. But I do know that it's very minimal in the number of folks that are being served. And just kind of curious if that is something that can be transitioned to our clinics and our hospitals? Is that something that's being planned to transition? And I guess my last question is, what is the original format of the agreement as far as pulling out of the lease earlier than February 2024? Just because I see that as, in my opinion, not necessarily necessary to make it last that long. So if there's a 30-day notice, then that would be good. And also just kind of curious about the transition of the work being done. When is that becoming more hospital-related, clinic-related type of stuff?
Well, I know I can speak on the rent agreement. So the rent agreement, there's a 60-day window of notice to terminate the lease. And, yeah, I think that it'd be beneficial to approve this so we don't have construction on top of our workers' heads while they renovate the space. Now, to the degree of the disturbance in any cause will vary, but anything usually happening on a roof can cause quite a distraction. So, you know, there's, there's really no way of getting around this. I would encourage to approve the lease agreement. The reason probably goes to 2024 is because that's when the grant terminates for the funding for that. So I know I spoke with Lars, and his team are ambitious to get the work done. And, yeah, the sooner we get it done, the sooner we can move people into the building.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just a quick question, and I apologize for my own ignorance. But the portion of the building that the office is in, I believe there was another partial roof collapse near it. There was some concern that the whole wing was gonna get red-tagged. And this may be a question for Lars, but I don't know. So are you aware that there have been additional structural problems with that building? Are you aware whether they've been resolved to the satisfaction that extending this lease even for another year wouldn't put our people in harm's way? And I'll just expand my own comment. That shopping center is a, a long-time bone of contention on any number of levels. So if this is the only place we can lock it in to keep, you know, I just don't want to invest time in this without really having a really good understanding that this building is safe and that looking ahead, remodeling or whatever is appropriate. So I don't want to put you on the spot if you haven't been tracking that issue, but the building as a whole is a mess. There was some additional damage from recent weather events, and I just want some assurance that we're in a good, safe spot.
Yeah, well, it's a strip, and I think the damage you're speaking of is maybe 400 to 500 yards away from the building that we currently occupy.
Okay, so they're on that strip.
Pardon?
They're on that strip building. They're not on the main thing closer to Bevins?
Yeah, they're on, they're on the way opposite end of the building.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. Thank you.
Great, great.
How many, how many people, employees occupy this space?
Roughly five employees. And again, I just want to preface, sorry, go ahead.
Well, and there's, with the vacancy rate, there isn't room for them at the Bevins building, or?
That's when we talk about vacancy rate. I just want to clarify for the public and the board. So when you look at our overall staffing structure and vacancies, there's, there's vacancies due to grants not being filled and then necessary staff throughout the department. Those are two different things. So if you were to look at them separately, there's no correlation when it comes to vacancy and space. With the space that we do have, it's already allocated to the essential employees that we need. And those positions are being flooded. For example, next to my office, there's, there's a position that's being flooded in two days, right? So to move a staff member and get them settled in that office or any of the five other offices that are currently being flooded for the position is not going to solve our current problem because once they get settled there and the construction potentially lags, then we're back at square one with having to find a place to put these folks, to place these essential workers. So the space that we do have is already accounted for in the certain departments that are flooding for positions. And public health in general, it's difficult to fill positions. It's many, and not even public health. I think I can speak across all departments. We're doing our best. But to ensure that the flow of the building stays the same, reallocating people to those offices on a temporary, unforeseen timetable is not going to be beneficial to anyone. So again, I would say, you know, my recommendation would be to approve the lease so that we can continue to fill those essential positions and accommodate the staff as we do the construction.
And how long is the remodel of the file room supposed to take?
Yeah, so I had a great conversation with Lars the other day, and him and his team are looking into it with one of my staff members. From the conversation I had with Lars, he indicated that it could be a pretty easy fix, but they kind of got to get in here and look at it. And plus, weather constraints. We might have some of those. So to be determined, but, you know, the money's there. The resources are already in the office buildings to accommodate the staff down there. So it just makes a lot of sense right now.
Can I ask why it's not a six-month lease and why it's a year?
Because with the funding that we have, we have to build it out to 2024. And with the conversations that we had with the, with the lease agreement folks, I'm pretty sure it'd be flexible for any kind of reimbursement for leaving early. Also, we're TBD and don't have necessarily a timeline on when the construction could be done. God forbid we need other parts ordered from, you know, overseas. That creates a different kind of challenge. So that's a safety net for all.
And you said it's a 50-day termination?
Uh, 60.
60? So.
No, it is, yeah.
Okay. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I'm sorry if I'm misreading it, too. So the remodel was for the Bevins building, not this. So the remodel was for the Bevins building, not this office down in the shopping center. So when I'm looking at the HVAC system upgrade, that's to the Bevins building, not to this shopping center office, correct?
Correct, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anything from the public? Do we have anybody in Zoom?
There's been a hand up for quite a while, so I don't think it's related to this, but Natasha Sokolowski has her hand up.
Natasha, if you're here to speak on this item, you can unmute yourself and give your name and have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. My name's Natasha Sokolowski. I actually had my hand raised for the prior comments. I will say that I think it's appropriate to request that the chat be enabled for Americans with disabilities. However, moving forward with what was being spoken of prior, there's been hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars distributed to our community, our cannabis community specifically, so I was just wondering why that cannot be allocated to the Warming Center in Lakeport to provide for some.
So that, we don't have the Warming Center on our agenda today, we did have people speaking on that during Public Input, which is at 9:06 at the beginning of every meeting. And so you're welcome to join us next Tuesday and give public input at that time.
Great, I will do that, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in the Zoom room?
No hands.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the Board for action.
There's nothing further. Honorable Chair, I move to approve the lease for commercial property located at 858 Lakeport Boulevard in Lakeport from February 1, 2023, through February 28, 2024, and authorize the Chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes. And now we are finished with our open session items. We will move into closed session where we have four items. 8.1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 D1, FERC Project Number 77, Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. 8.2, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 D1 in RE National Prescription Opioid Litigation, MDL Number 2804, Case Number 8.3, public employee evaluation, Information Technology Director. 8.4, public employee evaluation, Health Services Director. Thanks for joining us today, and we will close now for closed session. Okay, was there any action taken in closed session?
Yes, there is some action to be taken out of closed session. Madam Chair, I would like to move to approve and authorize the Chair to sign the following settlement agreements in regard to National Prescription Opioid Litigation, MDL Number 2804, and the Partitionation Form in California State Subdivision Agreement for Distribution and Use of the TAVA Settlement Funds, Allergan Settlement Funds, CVS Settlement Funds, Walgreens Settlement Funds, and the Walmart Settlement Funds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you so much.